Okay, I'd like to call the order the meeting of the Dover Sherburne and Dover Sherburne Regional School Committees for Tuesday, July 28th, 2020. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note this meeting is being recorded and please be aware that anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Okay, so we're going to start with any community comments that are unrelated to the reopening of schools. We thought it made more sense for folks to have a chance to hear the reopening update presentation and then have the opportunity to comment afterward. So tonight there will be two comment sections. And just to reiterate, community comments are an opportunity for us to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, two to three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. And once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business. And unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. So are there any community comments that are unrelated to the reopening of schools? He's gonna have to help me because I can't see everything.
Yeah, with this many people, they should probably just announce themselves. I don't see any hands raised.
Just want to give a moment, just in case. Is there anyone who wants to comment not related to the reopening of schools? Just say hello. Okay, you think we're covered? You okay?
I don't see any hands raised. I did a quick scroll.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, then we will move to the first item on our agenda. And obviously, the reason that you are all here, the Fall Reopening Task Force Update with Dr. Kyo and the team. Take it away.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good.
Sorry, do you think we could just remind everyone to put mute on their push mute? Because some are getting feedback from someone.
Great idea. Okay, everyone muted? How's that, Leslie? Any better?
Yeah, I think Shannon's iPhone is not muted. Oh, there we go.
There it is. Okay, thank you. Okay, we all set? All right, I'm going to share my screen if that's okay. Okay, can everyone see that? Great.
Yeah.
So welcome everyone to our second of four reopening task force updates. As a reminder, these will take place every two weeks with our next being scheduled for August 11th. We'll use the same link for all of these meetings. I want to thank all of our stakeholders who've participated in this process and who have offered ideas and insights. The feedback and support has been invaluable. As Commissioner Riley has noted throughout the past several weeks, the goal has always been to reopen the schools in the fall for in-person instruction. However, as been noted in local and national media coverage and in the court of public opinion, the target is moving and the track that the pandemic will take is unpredictable to us all. As such, we've spread the talents of our school system around to prepare for any and all possibilities. As a reminder, our reopening task force is made up of over 80 teachers, administrators, school committee members, townspeople, and parents, and is built on the model employed by the Start Times Task Force, which we have an exec-- sorry, we have an executive committee, a steering committee, and six subcommittees, which include facilities, health and hygiene, teaching and learning, transportation, communications, before and after-school programming, which we're now renaming activities beyond the school day, as we're not planning for any before-school programming this year. And technology and budgetary considerations are built into the work of each of these subcommittees and the task force in general. With each passing week, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, or DEES, has been providing us with regular guidance for planning for the fall. Some of this guidance arrived as recently as last week. Thus, our subcommittees have not had a great deal of time to process it. However, for informational purposes, since our last presentation, we have been notified of the additional funds being made available to our districts, received guidance related to courses requiring additional safety considerations such as music, art, shop, PE, et cetera, protocols for responding to illness in our schools, transportation and guidance protocols, sorry, transportation guidance protocols, facilities guidance, and the process required for submitting our reopening plans, which I'll speak to in a few minutes. So when people download this slide presentation or see it on our website, all of these links are live, so you can track that stuff. As highlighted in my previous presentation, all of the reopening task force subcommittees have been tackling issues based on staff and community feedback, medical guidance, direction from our respective boards of health, CDC, Department of Public Health, and importantly, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. To be clear, as a public school system reliant on public dollars, we're obliged to honor the directives of the state as well as state and federal law. We cannot simply do as we please, as is the case for private schools. Over the next 10 slides, I'll provide an overview of the guidance we've received from the state as it applies to our subcommittees and a summary of the work that's been completed and remains to be done in this regard. We'll start with facilities. Guidance coming from the state with regard to facilities has been slower in arriving. In the earliest phases, we received information regarding distancing protocols, classroom configurations, and cohort sizes. More recently, we received further direction on cleaning protocols, ventilation, and movement within facilities. To date, we've set up sample classrooms to determine how many students we might fit within the state's guidelines, worked to declutter our spaces, and installed Plexiglas barriers to main offices and guidance spaces. Since our last meeting, we've installed additional Plexiglas in our nurses' offices, met with our HVAC contractors to assess our ventilation systems to verify that they are in fact up to code and beyond where possible, and to ensure that they're being properly inspected, cleaned, and replaced where necessary before the reopening of school. In addition, we've secured tents for all three campuses to expand options for breaks, potential outdoor learning spaces, and health waiting stations. Next, I'll review the work of the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee. As noted on this slide, much of the work of the Health and Hygiene Committee overlaps with that of the Facilities Subcommittee. As such, they've been in regular communication and are addressing issues and challenges collaboratively. There's been very little new guidance from the state with regard to health and hygiene, but implementing the directives put forth remains very challenging and offers requires synchronous communication with our respective boards of health. Our committee's been up to the task. So here are some of the issues that they've addressed recently. So since our last presentation, the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee has received, reviewed, and incorporated into our planning the protocols for responding to COVID-19 scenarios in the school, on the bus, or in the community. This is a question that comes up frequently. What will we do in the event of a case of COVID-19? And we want the community to know that we've established plans that align with the state's guidance and that of our boards of health. In addition, the Subcommittee has met with our custodians and food service providers to share protocols that apply to their work. We're not leaving to chance that that each department will be aware of the expectations of them without specific reviews. Finally, the Subcommittee has discussed the boards of, sorry, with the Boards of Health of Dover and Sherburne, the state's guidelines related to mask-wearing for grades pre-K to 1. So as you know, the guidance from the state was grades 2 to 12 had to wear masks and pre-K to 1 did not. At a recent joint meeting between Dover and Sherburne, the request was made from the boards that we, as a district, require all students to wear masks in the Dover Sherburne schools. I support this recommendation and request that joint school committees adopt this policy in their next meeting scheduled for August 11th. The transportation guidance, which again can be accessed via Slide 4, requires that schools ensure that masks are worn by all riders, that windows are kept open whenever possible, that one student be seated on a bench except in the case of family members, that seats be assigned, that hand sanitizing take place before boarding and exiting the buses, that high-touch areas be cleaned after each run, and that buses be disinfected daily. Furthermore, they are recommending the consideration of adding bus monitors to ensure proper protocols are followed. Because the guidance arrived late and no final decisions have been made regarding which option the district will pursue for the fall, this Subcommittee has not been able to complete much of the work that remains to be done. For example, without knowing which schedule model the schools will be adopting, families cannot yet determine whether or not they will require bus transportation for their children, and we cannot finalize our bus needs. We have preliminary data from earlier surveys, but more specific surveying will be necessary in order to determine sizes of the bus cohorts need for monitors, et cetera. As mentioned earlier, we're no longer calling this Subcommittee the Before and After School Programming Subcommittee, but rather the Activities Beyond the School Day Subcommittee. The key news to report in this regard at this juncture is that the MIAA, which is the state body overseeing inter-scholastic athletics, has pushed out the start of any fall athletics until September 14th. Remaining extracurricular activities will ultimately be dependent on the schedule decided upon and further guidance from the state, boards of health, and medical professionals. Moving forward, the Subcommittee will be making decisions about the format for sheet-a-data and the After-the-Bell program, which we would like to continue as the chosen schedule becomes clearer. As stated in our last presentation, the state hasn't offered guidance with regard to communications. However, as a system, we understand its importance and continue to strive for full transparency about the work we're doing. We recognize that an informed population is much better served than a population that's uncertain. As such, we continue to work toward better communicating what's happening with regard to the fall and providing staff and families with opportunities to weigh in on the decision-making. The key work that's been done by the Communications Subcommittee since our presentation on the 14th includes continuing to use Screencastify to deliver critical information in a quick and succinct manner, distributing FAQs to our families and staff, monitoring the DS reopening email account, and conducting a staff survey. Moving forward, we envision developing a survey for staff and families about the three models to be considered this evening. We'd like to hold Zoom meetings with staff and families as well to solicit feedback and to continue to publish key information related to the coming fall. The Teaching and Learning Subcommittee is by far our largest and most diversified. It's been charged with assessing the effectiveness of the remote planning of the spring and developing the three models to be discussed shortly. In addition, they're tackling the issues associated with our highest-need students. Their priority in the spirit of hashtag #WeRTS has been all along to ensure that all of our students are receiving the highest-quality education regardless of the model being considered. The key accomplishments of this Subcommittee since the 14th includes updating the in-person learning model to reflect current guidelines and safety regulations, finalizing a hybrid model for learning, including in-person and remote components, and designing uniform learning management system platforms and daily, weekly assignment templates. Now going to transition to the three models of learning we're recommending for reopening this fall. In the next few days, we and every other public school system in the state will be required to submit a plan for three possible reopening scenarios. The three plans are due on July 31st. A final decision must be rendered and submitted by August 10th. We're seeking a two-day extension in order to have a JSC meeting to vote on the final plan, which is scheduled for August 11th. It's important to point out that for each model that we are going to be submitting, we must include support for high-need students. So I'm going to move quickly through these, but according to the state, the in-person learning model that we developed must demonstrate that, number one, in-person instruction will be full-time and take place in school environments that have been appropriately modified. We will prepare for, number two, we will prepare for a subset of students whose families have decided to continue in a remote learning model, and, number three, that we recognize that this is not a return to our typical school experience, and as such, that our learning scheduling protocols and/or facilities use look and feel very different than our traditional educational model. The hybrid model to be submitted to DEES must serve as a mix of in-person learning with appropriate safety measures and remote learning. In our submission, we'll be required to speak to how student learning will change across the two learning environments of in-person and remote. As with the in-person model under the hybrid model, some families may still opt to have their students participate in a fully remote model. Likewise, some high-need students may need full-time in-person instruction even though we will be teaching both in-person and remotely. The remote learning model that we'll be required to submit will serve ultimately as the default learning model for the fall, and as such, is what we would return to should conditions deteriorate due to increased spread of the virus. As with the other two models, some high-need students may still require some in-person instruction. Additionally, as a system, we're required to submit as part of our plan procedures to ensure that all students participate in remote learning, including a system for tracking attendance and participation. Assurances that our academic requirements align with Mass State standards, a policy for issuing grades, and a plan for communicating with students, parents, and guardians. Finally, as part of the remote model planning, we're required to submit information related to the technology platforms, staffing model, curriculum, and instructional materials we'll be using. So the obvious question is what will these models look like in reality for Dover Sherburne? This has been the very essence of the work of the reopening task force, and is what I will discuss next. The in-person learning model that we're proposing models our current daily schedule for our students pre-K to 12. Our start times that were scheduled to go into effect this fall remain. Our elementary students will begin the day at 7:50 and end at 2:15. Our secondary students will begin the day at 8:35 and end the day at 3:10 PM. The key difference in our, with our in-person model in comparison to the typical school experience of the past is that many safety measures must be put in place. Masks, straight-line classroom configurations, block scheduling, changed passing times, and so much more will make the day feel different. So to talk about the pros and cons of the in-person, of the in-person learning, excuse me for one second, in-person learning model. Under the pros, we see that all staff and students will be in attendance as a positive. The environment's obviously designed for learning. Educators and students have appropriate access to materials and resources. It provides students, we can provide students with feedback in real time. It's obviously better for classes like art, PE, technology, music, science labs, special education, ELL. The cons include crowding and greater risk for potential exposure. Masks and precautions definitely impact learning. Increased anxiety for staff and students, possibility of instability due to increased or prolonged absences by groups of students or teachers, and rigid classroom arrangements. So the hybrid model that we're proposing in an effort to increase synchronous learning for our less independent learners, students would experience two full days in person and three remotely. However, their teacher would be available to focus solely on them when remote. So students would be attending school on an alternating basis. So this is for pre-K through 8. Basically, Cohort A, which is of staff and students, essentially half your school, attends school in person Monday and Tuesday and studies remotely Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Cohort B, the other half of your building, of staff and students, attends school in person on Thursday and Friday and studies remotely on Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So this is just another way of looking at it. With Cohort A in full class on Monday and Tuesday in person, and Cohort A would be then remote on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Cohort B would be remote on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and they would be full class in person on Thursday and Friday. Among the pros and cons, well, in the positive column, students stay with their teachers throughout the week. This allows for broader socialization with full class and SEL supports in place. Folks, can you please mute?
Did she say yes? I bet she did.
So another positive is greater access to the curriculum through live synchronous sessions with a dedicated teacher. So this is an important piece. If the kids are with their teachers on Monday and Tuesday, that teacher is then available to work with them synchronously on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. That's very different than what we had in the spring. Teachers are able to assess students in person, and obviously, this would allow for some deep cleaning of our schools on Wednesdays. On the downside of this hybrid model for pre-K to 8, only two in-person days per week. Masks and precautions clearly impact learning. There's a need for students to transition between in-person and remote days. The classroom setups will feel rigid and tighter, but within the state's 3- to 6-foot range and closer, I would say by far to the 6-foot range and probably close to 5-foot nose-to-nose in the largest classes and further distance in our smaller classes. We do benefit from having smaller class sizes in our district. Also, on the downside, a reduction in student socialization and clearly childcare issues. So at the high school level, it's a much more complex situation. We have kids changing levels, taking different classes. The size of our school is small, and the physical size of our students, which is adults, creates a much more complicated situation. So the hybrid scheduling options are limited, and the high school schedule will be different than that of elementary and middle school. Under this model, students will be attending school also on an alternating basis. However, Cohort A will just be of students. So they'll attend school in person Monday and Tuesday, and they would study remotely Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Cohort B of students would attend school in person on Thursday and Friday and study remotely Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So here you can see the difference. If this were Mrs. Johnson, the high school teacher, she would have half her class, the Cohort A students, in class on Monday and Tuesday, and those students would then work remotely on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. On her second half of students would be working remotely Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and then would be in person on Thursday and Friday. So I'm sure you can think about the pros and cons, but let's go through some of the ones that we came up with. Students attend class in smaller cohorts with more space in their classrooms. Bigger kids, more space, we think it's important. Fewer students in the school at any given time. So we're reducing our school of 660 roughly to 330, and that, I think, makes a big difference. Teachers are able to teach in the subject areas they specialize in. So this is really important. We considered having the high school hybrid model being just like the K-8 model that we've proposed, but it would mean that we would have high school teach, we would be asking teachers to teach outside their area of specialty. So for example, a biology teacher being asked to teach honors chemistry, that's a big ask, especially in a quick turnaround. Normally, something like that, you get about a year's notice, and you have plenty of time to prepare for it. And not all the teachers are trained in these other subject areas, so we saw this as a really big deal. Access to Singleton courses for all students is a positive. Utilization of innovative pedagogical practices such as the flipped classroom. So a teacher teaches the material in, sorry, the teacher sends the students home to learn the material remotely and then comes in to review that material that they've been learning on the in-person days. That's the flipped classroom model. We think it's pretty good, and we have teachers who do that now. Teachers are able to assess students in person, and obviously, it allows for deeper cleaning of the school on Wednesdays. On the downside, students only, would only have two in-person days per week. There'd be a need for students to transition between in-person and remote days. Masks and precautions impact the learning, as mentioned before. Students must take on a more independent role on remote days. There's a reduction in student socialization. They'd only be exposed to half the students in their class and half the students in the school, and of course, the rigid classroom arrangements. Under the Remote Learning for Dover Sherburne, pre-K to 12, students would receive their education 100% remotely via synchronous and asynchronous instruction. On the positive side is clearly the health and safety of everyone. That's, goes without saying. It's an equitable model for all students and staff. It's innovative, allows for innovative instructional practices, is consistent pacing and development of curriculum. The maskless faces, when the students don't have to wear the masks, the adults who work with those kids can read their facial expressions. It's really important for relationship building and communication. And all staff would be available for full-time employment. On the downside of the remote model, it's challenging to develop relationships under this model. Just imagine starting the school remotely and trying to get to know the kids in your class, especially the younger kids. Inconsistent home environments. Some people have plenty of supports at home, some people do not. There's a heavy reliance on student independence and executive functioning skills. Assessment of student learning is challenging and feedback is labor-intensive. Academic integrity of work submitted can become problematic, especially at the secondary level. Maintaining a work-life balance is tough for our staff and families, and of course, Zoom fatigue as we experienced in the spring. So in following our timeline, the next step for us as a system will be the submission of our three plans this week, July 31st to DEES. So in the coming weeks, we'll continue to hear from staff and families and use that information along with the insights of the subcommittees to shape the final recommendation, which we submitted to the JSC, the Joint School Committee, on August 11th. I've left this slide in the deck as I believe these resources remain useful and relevant, and again, would like to encourage people to check them out. Before I move to questions from our school committee members, I want to thank, once again, the many people who've worked with me to develop these plans. This was a joint effort. Our families, staff, and community members can rest assured the reopening task force has given this work a 100% effort and has established models for our students that will serve them well regardless of the turns the pandemic takes. We've included their names, the names of all participants in the appendix. We also have included in the appendix the, what the schedules look like under each scenario for each grade level. So if you get a chance, please thank the people who participated in this process because it has been a tough and challenging undertaking. So with that, I would like to open it up to questions or comments. We also want to remind people that we are monitoring the DS reopening at doversherburn.org email account. It's actually really been helpful to us. It not only allows us to think about our work, but also to get outside the box the number of resources that have come through through that process and the things that I hope we've been able to answer. It's really been worthwhile. So I'll turn it over to you, Brooke, to facilitate questioning.
Thank you. I'm going to just pause for a sec while community members and committee members digest some of this and get their-- and get their thoughts in order. We can, as I mentioned before, we'll take community comments and then school committee member questions. And before we do that, I'm sure we all want to extend our gratitude to Dr. Keough, to the leadership team, the teachers, the staff, the students, the parents, all the town boards who have contributed to this Herculean effort. It's, we know it's very tough because information is changing so rapidly. There's no good answers and there's no way to make everyone happy. And that's a tough place to be in for people who really care as deeply as you all do. So thank you so much. Okay, community comments, as I mentioned before, community comments are not a back-and-forth Q and A. As you saw in the presentation, we're going to be holding those sessions coming up, and there'll also be more surveys, and you can always reach out to your committee members or the task force. So community comments are optional to make a comment from what you've heard. And we're now to take comments regarding reopening, and I'm going to need help in finding.
Brooke, I'm happy to help you. I can monitor, and a couple of us can monitor. If the folks who are on the call can use the raise hand feature and then wait until we call on you to unmute, that would be super helpful.
Thank you so much.
There are now 369 people on the call, so.
And I don't want to miss anyone, so let's go carefully. All right, anybody have any community comments related to the reopening presentation?
Looking for hands.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any.
Sarah Perini may have a hand raised. It's a clap, but maybe it's a hand raised.
Hi, Sarah. Do you have a question or comment? Sorry?
No, well, no, I did have a question, but it's more of, hi, by the way. It was more about the, and maybe you can't even address this tonight, but it was more about the notification that came out last night and tonight about schools reopening 10 days past the original open date with the teachers' unions?
Can I ask you to stay on the line here? And when we get to the next agenda item, that is part of that.
Awesome.
Yeah, so that will be coming up in a little bit, but thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks, Brooke.
Nice to hear you. All right, is there any other comments in regard to the reopening?
Brooke, can I just really quickly say you can also ask questions? We may not be able to answer them now, but you can ask questions that then potentially will be answered either later today or in the next presentation to make sure that they address those concerns.
Thank you. Appreciate you clarifying.
And Brooke?
Yes.
If I could add, sometimes people don't like to speak up on these chats. And I think we could probably monitor the chat room if people wanted to submit questions that way.
We have the chat disabled.
Oh, I see. Okay.
We don't normally have chat in our meetings, so.
Well, as I mentioned in my presentation, the emails coming to us through the reopening subcommittee, I mean, the communications subcommittee are really helpful. And I also think as the school committee starts to generate questions, others will probably feel the need to chime in. So I don't know if you're planning to keep these separated completely or if there's flexibility there.
So.
Brooke, I'm trying to raise my hand. This is Rochelle.
Hi, Rochelle. Okay, great.
I was wondering for the hybrid model with, I think Professor Superintendent Keough mentioned that one of the benefits would be that the teacher would stay with the cohort all week, whether they were live or remote. How would we cover the staffing for that? Would we be hiring more teachers or can you speak to that? Or maybe you can't comment, but that's a question.
So thank you, Rochelle, and it's good to hear from you. So the thinking is that essentially we're splitting the school in two. And therefore, one half of the school is in with their students on the two days and the other half is working remotely with them. And then the students, when they come back, they come, obviously, it flips. We're, you know, we're working through the challenges of the elective kind of offerings. And I don't know if Beth McCoy wants to speak to that. Beth, I know is here. I know her committee has processed this over and over and over. And so if I could, Beth, do you mind weighing in on that?
So for example, at the elementary level, if there are four classes in the second grade, two of them would come in with their assigned teachers on Monday and Tuesday, and then those assigned teachers would work with them remotely the rest of the week. And then the other two classes would come in on Thursday, Friday after having worked with their teachers remotely early on in the week. And at the middle school, it'd be that certain teams come in on Monday and Tuesday and the other teams come in on Thursday, Friday. So it's really, it's not too complicated. We have the staff assigned to the students already. It's just a matter of half of them coming in at any given time. And as Dr. Keough mentioned, the high school is much more complicated, which is why we're not going for that model, simply because you can't take the schedule and slice it in half because there's teachers teaching across multiple grades, multiple sections. No two students have the same schedule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, I had a question too, if I could pop in.
Guys, yes, when you pop in, could you just say your name and your address, just for the record, before you make your comment would be very helpful?
Oh, sure. This is Amelia Slavsky. I'm 22 Normandy Road in Dover. And I would also like to extend a humongous thanks to everyone who's been working on this. This is so thoughtful and I appreciate everything that's going into it. My question was a little bit on the specifics of, I get the three models, and I'm wondering though, Dr. Keough mentioned, let's say we're in school learning, but a parent doesn't feel comfortable sending their kid. How would that be accommodated? Are the teachers going to be filmed? Is there more on that yet or is that coming later? Thank you.
So there's a lot of discussion about that across the state. The Department of Ed recognizes that this is a huge issue for people because if you're teaching in person, how can you possibly conduct remote learning at the same time? One possibility is allowing potentially teachers to zoom out of their classrooms so students could watch the teacher's lesson synchronously. Another option that I think we may need to consider, since we are such a small system, is that the state is providing the names of organizations, like for example, Edge Annuity. So it's edgeannuity.com. They offer coursework remotely that is aligned with the state's standards. It's really worth looking into at a fairly reasonable cost. So that is another possibility for us. We just have not ironed that out completely. Part of the problem is we don't know how many kids there will be. And this is why we really need to survey now and get as much information as we can. I don't know if that answers your question, Amelia, but that's pretty much where we are. Would you add anything to that, Beth?
Thank you.
Okay. I also see a couple other hands here. Elizabeth Millad.
Thanks. I'm muting myself and turning my video on so you guys can see me. Thanks.
Oh, there you are.
High school social studies teacher. I was wondering if we could just go back to the hybrid model for a moment. I think one of the advantages that you cited to the hybrid model for K through eight is that it reduces the contagion factor for not only students but also teachers. And I know the high school is so incredibly more complex because of the nature of the courses. And I'm grappling with the fact that for the high school teacher, the high school teacher will essentially be getting the full student load and the full student contagion in the building potentially. And I was just wondering, and I know, I mean, the asking teachers to teach and prep courses that they may not have taught before under these circumstances in particular, that's a big ask. But I just wonder if sort of thought of teacher anxiety around this because that was sort of the number one con on the fully personal, fully face-to-face was student and teacher anxiety. And I noticed that that wasn't taken into consideration as a con of the hybrid model. And I just wondered to what extent that was discussed and if teachers, if there was any thought of surveying teachers on, you know, would you rather be in school five days a week or whatever and teach your normal course load? Or would you opt for taking on more from a course perspective in exchange for more security around less exposure? Thank you. I'll mute myself and.
Great questions, Liz. Really, really good questions. And basically, yes, to all of the above. So yes, we have factored that in. And yes, I should have included it. It just didn't make it onto the slide as anxiety is an issue for any kind of in-person for everyone. So it just, I'm sorry about that. It didn't make it onto the slide. But we have definitely discussed it. And I know John Smith and Keegan are also on this Zoom, and they may want to weigh in. But I think what it really boiled down to, and I know they've had conversations with the department heads about the feasibility of the high school following along the same model as the K-8 model presented. The sense was that might logistically be either, if not impossible, it would mean a lot of potential loss for the students. That said, your points are valid. And yes, we do intend to survey people and survey people quickly after this presentation. So I'm really interested in hearing what the teacher perspective is. And by the way, I did not incorporate any of the feedback from parents or teachers into these slides because it was so speculative. We were asking people to make decisions about whether they would send their kids to school three weeks in the parent, in the case of the parents, three weeks ago. Think about how much has changed in just three weeks. I mean, this thing is changing so fast. So that's why we really want to ask, right, as soon as possible, for people's perspective. And I think the school committee would insist upon it because they want to make informed decisions as well based on what parents and teachers are telling us. So yeah, we're going to survey you guys for feedback on those things. I don't, John, is, John or Ann, do either of you want to, or Beth, weigh in on Liz's question? It's a good one.
Hi, Dr. Keough. I'm happy to do a little bit. John Smith, high school headmaster. Yes, certainly something that we've been considering, and in fact, since last Wednesday. Ann Keegan and Rob Williamson, who do a bulk of the scheduling for the high school, have been working directly with Aspen to see if different models would in fact work. And they had some pretty major glitches and we got some results today. And we essentially would not, at this point, unless we did something different, which we're not thinking of, would not be able to keep our current schedule. It's going to change greatly what students get for their courses, which concerns me. It's also going to change who would teach what. And we did talk to department chairs this Friday and said, we may have to go back and have you reassign staffing. In some departments, it can be worked out, but others, it's all to do with certifications. In the case of science, it's all over the place. So you've got people who can teach chem but not physics or can teach bio but not chem. We also have run into issues where if somebody traditionally teaches grades nine, 10 and 12, now it would have to be nine and 10 or 11 and 12. And we might actually have somebody who's never taught that course teaching it. I don't know. To me, that doesn't sound effective. So that's, you know, one of our concerns. We're continuing to work with Aspen to look at ways in which we can reduce the potential exposure for teachers. And as of now, and Ann can certainly comment on it, we have not been able to devise a schedule that will allow us to do that. The other thing too that we're concerned about is having all those kids in a class in the two-day model, up to 24, 25 kids in a couple of classes, they're much larger than the elementary kids. And maybe they can fit in the three-foot model, but it's going to be pretty highly restrictive. And honestly, I'm worried about the closeness of the kids and the teacher in those rooms. For those of you who know the high school, you know, we have rooms of varying sizes. Not every room is a standard size, so that's another reason why.
I would just mention, you know, I know Jill Fiedor is on here as well as Matt Vitale and Kay Peterson from the Boards of Health. I don't know if they have any thoughts on the contagion factor, but I would agree with John in that if we went with the two-days-in model for teachers at the high school, again, you're putting more bodies that are larger in a smaller space. So if we can take those bodies and spread them out, I believe that the farther you spread people out, the less potential there is for transmitting germs. But I would leave that to the health professionals to go further.
This is Matt from the Sherburne Board of Health, if I can pipe in. So what I would say is, you know, I think going back to the question of exposure, I think in each case, every student and every teacher have a period of face-to-face contact within at least 72 hours. It sounds like for the K through eight, you're saying all of your students for half the time. For the high school students, you're seeing half of your students at a time. And I think especially going back to the point of if you get into areas where you have much higher density, that probably makes it some level of difference. I think that the state's guidance has been that three or six feet are reasonable as you have multiple layers of protection between masking and distancing and symptom screening. All of these things work together. But I think that from an exposure standpoint, as I sort of hear this, it doesn't sound like a significantly different pattern of exposure for an educator in the high school or in the elementary grades. It seems similar to me.
Brooke, we have a number of people with hands up. Would you like me to let you know?
Yes, please, or you can just call.
Okay, so we have Lindsay Kobuzeski, I think it is. I'm sorry, I might have messed up your name. Okay, Lindsay. Kristin Dennison?
Hi, Kristin Dennison, 36 Springdale Avenue in Dover. I'm just wondering, I'm sure you guys are doing this in the planning. It seems like it's highly possible that we may begin school with one model and then have to change to another model through the year. And then hopefully, maybe we would be able to change back. I just want to ask that if that is part of the planning, how we would pivot if we had to?
Brooke, do you mind if I just automatically respond to people or do I need to check in with you for permission?
No, you do not. We relax the normal protocol slightly. We're going to have to let our school committee members also ask questions. But yes, please feel free, and as long as we, you know, have a worthwhile dialogue, then I think this is important.
Okay, so to answer Kristin's question, which is a really, really good one, that isn't, I didn't really hone in on that deeply in the slides, but there is in fact a protocol in place from the state in terms of what we do if someone is sick. And it's quite detailed. So that's linked in that slide number four about under the circumstances of which people would have to, you know, leave and stay out. And I know that Jill and Matt, Jill Fiedor, who's our lead nurse, and Matt Vitale and Kay Peterson, Matt representing Sherburne Board of Health and Kay representing Dover, have had some conversations about this as well. Is that correct, Jill?
Yes, it's one of the major topics that we continue to discuss as we're working on the state's guidelines. So it will be part of our protocol and we will have an outline of what to do when, if and when there's a case in the school or in each building. And that in part will be with our continued collaboration with the Boards of Health. And we look to them for guidance. And we look to them for guidance when, when these questions come up with, with any public health issue. And certainly will be working with them closely as we reopen the schools, in whatever format that's going to be.
I would add to that, unfortunately, Kristen, what what I'm worried about is an infection in the school, an infection in the school, people panicking. I am worried about that. I, we, we saw just last year with the prevalence of triple E, how scared people were. People were pulling their kids out of school. They, there were people making recommendations that we close the schools. The Board of Health had to get involved. And that was because a horse was bitten in Medfield and died. So, you know, I, I'm joking really. I'm just saying that I think if there were infections in the schools, I think people are going to be very nervous. And that's why this is so important. That's why what Jill is talking about, our working with the Board of Health, which works very, very closely with the Department of Public Health, will be so important because we can't afford knee-jerk reactions. We, we know there is a certain amount of risk for everyday living within this current pandemic. That we can't make go away. The question is, eventually, it gets pitted against the interests of our students as well. Like what happens to kids when they are missing big periods of time of key, key instruction? Especially, for example, our kids who are learning to read, whose parents may not be able to teach that. What happens to those kids if they miss six months to a year and a half of learning? Or to our kids who are emotionally fragile? Or to our kids who are in less functional homes, who rely on our support? I think that at the end of the day, we, we obviously want to be responsible. We don't want to take chances with anyone's lives unnecessarily ever. But we also know that this thing is here for a while, so now what? And that's why Jill and Matt and Kay, working so closely with the Boards of Health and with the Department of Public Health, will be key in this process.
Andrew, can I just say one other thing, just in response to that question of pivoting?
You could introduce yourself, Kay.
Kay McCarthy, Director of Student Services. Kristen, just on your question about pivoting on the logistical side, as you'll see when you look through some of the schedules, the hybrid and the remote schedules are identical at the, I think at all levels. So that is helpful in consistency for students as we move, as we may need to move through some of those models too. But just wanted to add that point on the logistical point.
Thanks, Kay.
We have a question from Lauren. Lauren doesn't have a last name.
Hi, I'm Lauren Morgan from 65 Ivy Lane in Sherburne.
Hi.
I had a question on the K through eight hybrid model. I was just curious why, I understood the pros and cons of it, but it just seems counterintuitive to me to have all the kids in a classroom at that age where they may be pulling off their masks or their, I just think of like how a stomach bug spreads in an elementary school classroom. And the more, you know, we're talking about more bodies in a room. And I'm curious why, I understand that they can have the same teacher all week, but just curious why that was weighted more, you know, rather than having half the class in two days a week, half the class in another two days a week, or one week on, one week off, some of the other models that we've heard about.
So, great question, Lauren, and definitely one of those ones that came up along this process. I think what we are thinking and relying on, quite frankly, is that that from what we are hearing, that the risk to the younger kids is less. Now, I say that with a grain of salt because risk for any child is concerning. But that, from what I'm being told, that the, first of all, the, the spread from younger children is is less frequent, perhaps because they're lower to the ground. I don't know what the reason for that is, but it seems to be less frequent. And the impact in terms of illness on the kids, from what I have read, is less impactful. And I'm wondering if Matt or Kay or Jill could weigh in on that as well? Because it was a part of our decision-making.
I am always happy to chime in. So this is Matt. Unless Kay, you can cut me off if you'd rather weigh in. I mean, I think the reality is, there's no set of strategies that will be uniformly great because we're in the middle of a pandemic and we have a series of challenging choices that we have to make with sets of trade-offs. So I think that the data that Andrew cited is generally what's understood in terms of the kind of observations that have come out of other areas, as well as looking at the, you know, kind of general patterns in Massachusetts, although most of the age cutoffs there have looked at ages up to 19. I think that the sets of trade-offs are having different strategies for young adults versus children are supported by the observations we have. But I think going back to the previous point, flexibility is the most important thing for us to bring to the table as we learn about our own experiences as a district going live and as we learn from other districts in the state and in the country. And so I think that the available data suggests that younger people are less likely to both become infected and to transmit infection to adults. I think that more experience will help us figure out what, how that plays out in DS. But I think having a difference between those is supported by the data.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks. You know, the 353 of us are really all in this together. We're all parents too, and your questions are great ones that we might have. I'm happy to be flexible, as I said, in this and how we're presenting this. I do want to know, I'm sure some of my school committee colleagues are chomping at the bit. So do we want to, do you want to take questions from them as well? And we can.
I think the only hand that's left before we transition the school committee questions is Dr. Reineman. So I think that might be a good way to.
Better let her speak, okay.
Okay. And then I think maybe we could move into school committee.
Okay, thanks for checking that, Maggie. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thanks, Maggie. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. I just wanted to add on to the responses to Lauren's question about the elementary schools being in. I don't know if it was evident in everything we described. There was so much information. When the middle school and elementary schools are in session in the hybrid model, we're spreading the kiddos out over a couple of classrooms. So instead of having 20 kiddos in one classroom, we would have 10 in one and 10 in an adjacent room. So that density of student bodies would go down. So on top of everything else, everyone added about the rate of infection kiddos. I think we've got them less densely in the building. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Great point, and I'm sorry I didn't mention that because we have definitely discussed that.
There was lots of things.
There's a lot of details. I know. Thank you, Deb. That's really helpful. Okay, is, can you see from community comments that we, you think we covered them all at the moment? I'm sure there'll be more.
We have one more from Merryweather Baras, and then maybe we'll transition after that.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, Brooke, just as a reminder, we're going to have, we're going to try and set up some Zoom times for folks to pose their questions as well. So this isn't the final word.
Great. And always reach out and use, to us personally and the email as well. But go ahead, Merryweather.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Great. My name is Merryweather Baras. I'm a special education kid on at the high school. And this might be getting you into the weeds, so feel free if there's a better form for response to direct me to that. I was wondering, thinking about the hybrid model at the high school and thinking about the multi-grade special education programs that we have, including the language-based learning disability program, the program that we're attending to the high school that are multi-grade, how that is being taken into account with the hybrid so that those teachers don't end up having students in both cohort A and cohort B and needing to be then in the classroom for those four days.
I'm not sure I heard that entirely, but I think, sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry. I think what she's saying is talking specifically about specialized programming at the high school for special ed and just attention, whether attention's being paid to making sure that the kids that this teacher works with are in one of the two cohorts and that they're not mixing. I believe, is that what you were saying?
That's it. Yeah, we have just a lot of multi-grade programs. So thinking in terms of how the cohort to be split up, because I can see special education professionals then having to be in the building all the time if they have students in both cohorts.
Kay, do you mind speaking to that?
No, I think I understand the question. So we aren't splitting things up by grade. So that's one piece. So it's going to be done alphabetically. But, and staff will be in the building for the four days at the high school. So I'm not sure, and again, we could talk a little bit more about this, but we have been talking a lot about in all the different plans and iterations of the planning, pre-K through 12, you know, how special education and specialized instruction will work. So yes, a lot of attention's being paid to it. And we aren't really, you know, we're really still fine-tuning exactly what the schedule will look like and what the special education staff members will kind of be doing on a daily basis. But because we aren't doing this by grade and it will be probably more alphabetical or in a different way, I don't think that that would be an issue. But again, I'm not totally sure on the question, but I think, did that somewhat answer, Merryweather?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm driving at this moment, so it's definitely choppy, but thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Merryweather.
All right. I think we'll move on to school committee questions, which I'm sure there are some. So Leslie, do you want to go ahead?
Hi, I want to say thank you to everyone on these subcommittees. I know you have put in a tremendous amount of work, so thank you. I have a long list of questions, but my first is, I don't know who exactly is communicating with the teachers. I want to ask that. I want to ask how the teachers are feeling about this. It's very uncertain and unnerving time. And I'm also on that note wondering, are these teachers going to be allowed to teach outside? Do they have that option if they want to teach outside 100% of the time for the elementary kids? Are they allowed to do that? As we all know, you know, the studies are showing it's safer.
So, two things, Leslie. So we're trying to communicate with the teachers the same way we are with parents, which is not perfectly, but they're hearing essentially the same thing that the parents are hearing. So everyone's hearing this model for the first time tonight and/or these models for the first time tonight. And that's why we want to be sure to give people a chance to weigh in. And I suspect that some of those Zoom meetings, we may have Zoom meetings by building because they're specific to the building. So that was the first answer. What was the second part of your question?
I really, I'm hoping that we're exploring the outside option and the teachers themselves are being given the option if they want to go outside. And are they comfortable with that? Because as we know, the numbers and the safety is, it's better when they're outside.
Totally agree. So we, we're willing to, to let people go outside with their kids for sure. And I don't think you're going to find a lot of rigidity on the part of the administration if people would like to do that. It's not always practical, depending on the subject area, and especially at the grade level, the differences between the grade levels. But yes, we, you know, part of the rationale for our tents is in fact for kids to get outside, especially even if there's inclement weather, to get outside and to get air. You know, wearing these masks is uncomfortable. It really is. And for long periods of time, it's not a very pleasant experience. And I, I'm honestly concerned about that. I think that's going to be really hard. So we do want to give people as much opportunity to get outside and to, to have classes outdoors if, if it's at all feasible. The thing that's not always practical is, for example, moving, you know, 25 desks times 12 outside into the grass and where some areas are softer than others. And, you know, it's, that's not, that might not work perfectly. But we are creative people. And for example, at the high school, they have that beautiful courtyard and there's a lot of potential classroom space there. So we've talked about that. But we are, are all in on the outdoor learning. The problem is, you know, from my perspective, and only my perspective, is that it's New England and it'll start getting cold soon. And, and, you know, if we just go straight outside, then do we have to worry about mosquitoes? I'm told that triple E is supposed to be worse this year than it was last year. That we're looking like a three-year model, sorry, three-year cycle for triple E. So there's, there's just concerns, but we have been batting that around and we do want that to be an option available to our teachers. Because you're right, you're absolutely right, especially for things like music. You know, music, singing is like coughing. You might as well put 25 kids together coughing. In a closed room, that's not going to work. Same thing with instruments. So, so we have to find ways to do that outside and spread out. And so we're so lucky in that we have these incredible professionals who live and work in our, our communities who will give us great guidance in that regard. And this is a conversation I've had with Jill many times, and I know she's had with Matt and with Kay and probably with the Boards of Health collectively, but it's on our minds.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Leslie, who's next?
I had a question. I'm not sure if this is for the facilities or for the health committee, but wondering, as we think about, hopefully, we will be able to utilize the outdoor space a lot in the months to come. But as we think about further into the winter and with being indoors and having more inclement weather, are we thinking about air purifiers for the classrooms in addition to the cleaning processes that will be put in place?
Great question. Megan, do you mind responding to that, Dawn?
Right, so we've had, Andrew and I had a meeting last week with our HVAC contractor. And in all of our buildings, we have systems that do fresh air exchange. And so the air is constantly being switched out. And our filters are such that as the air is being exchanged, you know, certain germs and, I don't know, foreign things are being filtered out if they come in our building, right? And we're, we actually are operating on our filter system above where the CDC is recommending. So we're one step above the filter model number that they're recommending.
Can you be more specific about that, Dawn? The number?
Yeah, so MRF-14, MRF-14. And MRF-13 and up is what's being recommended. And I will share that we've, and we've, we've learned a lot during this. There's a certain point where you can have your filter being too high-concentrated. So that's sort of what the hospitals use for their operating rooms. You don't, we don't want to go that high because what that does is, it doesn't bring as much fresh air in because the filter is so tight that things aren't coming through. So these are all things that we've learned. But all of our systems are in the process of having all their preventative maintenance scheduled moved earlier in the year. Everything's going to be completely checked for operation, for clean filters, that everything is running to speed. We're also looking at the parameters in which we do our air exchange. Typically, in the summer, you have a 30% threshold of fresh air and 10% in the winter. We're looking to see where if we could increase that to bring more fresh air in. But I will say that in our hot, humid periods of time, maybe in the early fall, that we have to be careful because you've got to balance that with your air conditioning and bringing in too much humidity. That's counterproductive. But I feel like we have learned a lot and feel that all of our, in all of our buildings, we are running systems that are safe and are protecting our students and staff.
That's great. So the air filtration and the exchange is at a good level across all, across the district, but also at Chicory and at Pine Hill too?
Exactly. Yep, they all have their air circulate, the fresh air circulations, the air handlers that bring in, circulate fresh air. And that's where we're going to maximize, there's that fine line, but we're going to maximize the amount of fresh air being brought in. And at night, we can open it up. So if you, anyone remembers being at Chicory, where we talked about the air conditioning, all in all, that was sort of built to change overall the air in the Chicory building back in the day to bring in the cool air at night and take out the hot air. So that system is, it was built to do that whole fresh air exchange. So that's where we do have great systems. So that's where we do have great systems here because of the age of our buildings. And at Pine Hill, even though it's a little bit older, it's actually got a lot of airflow in the building itself and a good air handler that's in good working condition.
Great, thank you.
Who's next? Leslie, do you have another question?
I have lots of questions. As a follow-up on that, Dawn, thank you for being, really explaining that situation. Given the fact that we're operating above what's required, I guess I'm just wondering if we really say we did choose the hybrid model, do we need one whole day to clean the surfaces? Or could the custodial staff come in when the students leave and say work till 11:00 PM? And then that would allow another day in school? Just wondering, maybe Matt Vitale would like to weigh in on this? I'm not sure.
I missed the front part of that. What I would say, yeah, so I think the question was, if we have high performing air filtration, do we still want a down day for deep cleaning? Did I get that right?
Do we need, do we need a down day? Because I would prefer to have the kids in school. So yes.
So I would say I am probably outside of my wheelhouse to answer that in any kind of credible way. And would say, I think that the question of like, how much is surface driven, which is what we're addressing with deep cleaning versus air exchange mitigated, which is what we're doing with the airflow, I think, remain somewhat of a question of a work in progress. I don't know that there's great data that says if you do this, you don't need to do that. My personal two cents would be if there's chances to do both of something, that seems appealing right now, even if it means a little bit less classroom time, given the general state of nervousness I think both parents and teachers have.
If I could add to that, Matt, Leslie, that one of the real challenges in this process that I think, I'm not sure if people have thought about, is that we're also paying attention to what our neighbors are doing. And that's mainly because we, we're, we are cognizant of the fact that our teachers also have children attending school in area systems. And so the, the idea of the two days in, whether it's two days in like the high school model or two days in like the elementary, middle school model, it's pretty, it's, it's rising to the surface as the more common model around us. And that doesn't mean it has to be that way for us. But it's, it's one of those variables of which there are so many, you know. It's, this is like figuring out a Rubik's Cube. There are so many different variables, but how it impacts our teachers with young children also plays, has played into that discussion. Would you agree with that, Beth? Is there anything I'm missing on that?
I, I think you covered it.
Okay.
Can I, can I follow up on that?
Yeah, and then Angie's after you.
I appreciate that we're, of course, watching what our neighbors are doing, but I was looking at our numbers and we're still, I believe, 0.3% infection rate both in Dover and Sherburne, which is below all of our neighbors. So I, of course, appreciate that you're looking at it, but I just did want to mention that. And I know that our infection rate is still very low.
Is it okay if I chime in on that?
It's okay with me, because I think you, you have a better sense from having had these conversations with Jill and Kay and the Boards of Health. But people probably don't know that Matt works at Brigham and Women's in the COVID unit. And I'm sure, Matt, I'm not doing justice to your credentials to be offering these insights, but you are certainly qualified.
Yep, I, I appreciate that. What I would say is I think our testing volume will change. There's going to be cases that we have. And so I think that in general, we are very interconnected to the larger metro Boston area in terms of where parents work, where kids socialize, what the connections are, whether it's kind of in school or in extracurricular. I think that I'm reassured in general by the testing we've had to date, but wouldn't significantly change the things we do in the school based on a perception that Dover, Sherburne is a significantly different risk profile than Wellesley or Holliston or Ashland. Whether or not our testing has a different rate of numbers, I suspect our risk profile is similar. And to really understand it, we'd probably need more comprehensive testing than we've had to date in general, just to sample kind of adequate volumes to draw those conclusions. And even then, that risk can change in a week.
And I would just like to add that some of the discrepancy between our rates in Dover and Sherburne and those of the surrounding communities is, is a function of the fact that those communities have nursing homes and we have none in our community. So many of the cases in the first half of the pandemic around here were in nursing homes. And now that those are under control, we're seeing that the cases in, in young adults and teenagers are starting to increase in Dover. So I, I think we, we can't be too reassured by those numbers. I, I don't mean to be too negative. I mean, we're doing, we're obviously doing very well, but, but we have to be very vigilant. I, I would say that about the issue of cleaning on Wednesdays, I, I have no idea. I don't, it's not in my wheelhouse to comment on how long it takes to clean the schools. But I think a deep cleaning between cohorts is, is important despite the fact that we have, will have schools that are very well ventilated and with filtered air.
Thanks, Kay. And by the way, just as a reminder, Kay is on the Health and Hygiene Committee representing the Dover Board of Health. It's also a physician.
Thank you.
We have a question from Ann and a question from Amanda.
But I had Angie, sorry, can Angie go first and then Ann and then Amanda?
So Dawn, I know you said with regards to all the buildings have good air ventilation, but I've had some questions from parents because Pine Hill is a hybrid of air conditioning, some window units. And then, so it kind of affects how it, it plays out. And then also the fact that Pine Hill is not wholly air conditioned, having kids with masks on all day and some parts of that building can get quite hot. So I didn't know if there was any way that we can speak to that because I have had parent concerns email me about that.
Right. So again, if, if we're in the hybrid, we have half the students in. So we're going to be able to sort of spread the children out and potentially not be in those hot pockets. As you know, we've got great airflow in some of the back rooms that have, that aren't directly in the sun. So I, I think that part of that will play students where the, the, away from the hot areas, but also we're looking into the backwards flow air. So the fans that go into the windows pull the air out to provide more circulation in those spaces. And, you know, like we said, we've got some rooms that are air conditioned, but I think that we survive when there's double the students at Pine Hill. We feel like if we can spread them out and have more outside opportunities, that that will sort of hopefully get us over the hump where there could be hotter weather in September.
Okay, thank you.
And could I just add on the Wednesdays, too, the one thing, we're obviously looking, looking to limit adults and, and such that are in the building. We were looking at Wednesday, too, to be our day where we have to have repairs or some maintenance work done to keep those people out of our buildings when we have staff and students. So that was another benefit of us having a day for the buildings on top of the deep cleaning.
Okay, thank you. Ann, I think you're up next.
Thanks, Brooke. I'd like to start by saying, I know it's been said, but I'll say again, thank you very much to the, our leadership, the administration, teachers, school committee members and parents who are on this reopening task force. A ton of work and a moving target, which adds so many layers. So I appreciate the work and I appreciate how hard it is and hard it is even now to answer some of these questions because we know the information will change before school opens, sometimes two or three times before school opens. I want to follow up on some questions that happened, that were asked earlier. Amelia Slasby, I was, I think, asking about students who don't feel able to attend. And I'd like to follow up a little bit more on that and also on teachers who don't feel that they are able to attend for health reasons and how that's being addressed. It seems to me really important that, you know, as a school committee member, I know that part of my charge is to make sure that we offer a quality education to every member of our community. And whether it's a choice for parents to keep kids at home just because they don't feel comfortable or if it's because students have health concerns or their family members, immediate family members that have health concerns, same for teachers. And I'm, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about that and a little bit more. And I know, John, you mentioned at least at the high school, the thought about potentially engaging in online learning. And I know you, I'm hoping to hear more about that later when you guys have thought that through. So you don't have to worry about that aspect because I know that that's, that's a work in progress. But I'd love to hear a little bit more about, about everybody else who may or may not feel comfortable and how we're addressing that so they feel comfortable with their choices and are getting equal services.
So, so comfort level, you're talking more about comfort level and less about actual illness?
And I'm talking about if people are sick. I'm thinking of if I'm a...
Well, I'm looking at the neighboring town, seeing what they're...
No, I, no, I'm talking about, so parents are, are given the opportunity, they can choose if they feel like their child will be at risk. And so they don't feel like they can send their child to school. Sorry, I wasn't clear. So I'm thinking about them learning remotely, but also teachers, if they're in a high-risk category, either by age or illness or, or whatever, or... It's about that, sorry. Does that make more sense?
I totally get it. So, again, this is, this is partly why we need, you know, some of our surveying, when you think about it, we were putting the, the cart before the horse, right? We're saying to people, do you feel comfortable coming to school? And then they say, well, what's it going to look like? So now we're getting closer to knowing what it's going to look like. And, but the, the, the challenges are different. So the state has clearly said that families can, can opt into remote and out of in-person or hybrid. They've clearly said that. It's a different set of circumstances. I hate to say this, but it's true for teachers because it's more of a place of employment, so it's more of an employment question. So I think what we're planning to do, quite honestly, is to take each case by, on a case-by-case basis. So if, if, you know, currently, we have within our contract language about illness, we have language about family illness. We don't have language that says, I'm nervous. You know, I'm worried. I mean, I, I share the house with my 86-year-old mother, so I guess I could say I'm nervous, too. But that, we're just, we have, we're taking these things case by case. We really are. In terms of nervousness, I think, you know, we all have to assess, assess that just, I mean, we just, we have to look at that and what our comfort levels are. But that's kind of a decision you make, just like when you make a decision on what career you're going to pursue, your levels of tolerance in terms of risk. But we are, we're going to look at the illness issues on a case-by-case basis. That's sort of the best answer I can give you on that.
Ann, is that it? For now? Okay. Amanda, I think you're next. I can't see you, but...
Thank you, Brooke. So I wanted to echo everyone's thanks, but I want to do two sort of special things. One, I've been working on the Teaching and Learning Summit Committee. And I want to thank the teachers who are not 12-month employees, who are volunteering their time and being incredibly thoughtful. And as the people on the front lines who know their kids, who know their spaces, it's been so important to have their voices in there. So I wanted to thank them. I also wanted to thank Beth for setting teachers up really well for the fall. And I want to sort of let people know that in the spring, when we were doing emergency remote learning, it was emergency and remote learning. And given the preparation Beth has set up for our teachers, the fall remote learning, if that's what we end up doing, would be really robust and very different from what the spring looked like. So thank you to all of those people. I had a question slash sort of curiosity slash concern about the physical distancing. So in the community, we sort of, we see the six feet wherever we go. At the Sherburne Yacht Club, just say six feet away from everyone else. The state, I know, is saying three to six. Harvard Public School of Public Health released guidelines that say a minimum of six. And I'm just thinking about the ways in which we go beyond state minimums all the time in our communities and feeling like in the interest of student safety and teacher safety, particularly when students are, can be unpredictable and taking off their masks or sneezing. I'm wondering why we aren't using six feet as our minimum. I don't know if the Board of Health has thought about that. And I'm wondering if, if, or how that affects how many students we can have in the building if we did do a six-foot minimum physical distancing. I feel like that might go some way in alleviating some anxiety on the part of teachers and families about kids being in school if they knew that that was going to be kind of a baseline.
So, great, great, great point, Amanda. As far as the, the, the physical distancing goes, yes, we could. We always have it within our kind of purview to say we want, we want to go to eight-foot distancing. We, what we were charged with doing by the commissioner was sort of fit testing. He wanted us to go out and see it, what, how many people you could fit in this three-to-six-foot range. What we did was we set up for the numbers of kids we would have in our classrooms and determined at the minimum, according to our class size projections, that the, at the minimum, our students would be five feet apart. More often than not, far more often than not, thanks to our class sizes, they would be, in fact, six feet apart. So that was the approach we took. And quite honestly, if we had to go to six feet, then we would have to, we would have to move the entire system to the model that's been proposed for high school. So you would only ever have half a class in at the time. So we thought that that was not going to ultimately be what best served our kids, especially our highest need learners, our younger, our younger kids. So that's why we are pushing this model or proposing this model. The other thing I, I need to mention and very much appreciate and hope that Beth will have an opportunity to speak to is in fact the amount of work that's gone into the remote learning by our teachers and clearly under Beth's guidance. The professional development that's taken place this summer alone has been extraordinary. I don't think we've ever had the kind of professional development going on in this school district as we've had thus far. And we know that there will be more. And, and I think Beth, hopefully, at some point in this conversation, can speak to how remote learning will look different than it did in the spring. Because I think that's a, a place where we have perhaps unnecessary anxiety because of what people experienced in the past. I know that Michael was raising his hand in response to something I was saying earlier. So perhaps, Brooke, we could have his question to whatever it is I said.
Sure. Then we have a queue. So Michael, are you going to answer or ask?
Oh, I'm, I'm going to ask a follow-up to Amanda's question and then I'll, I'll save my other questions until last in the queue. How's that?
Thanks, Michael.
So, and, and this is, this is relative to both the, the physical distancing as well as any of the other health and hygiene protocols. I, I guess when, when it comes time to evaluate a final recommendation for vote by the school committees, I would like to hear that each of the Dover and Sherburne Boards of Health have signed off on what those protocols are. And to the extent that there are potentially gating standards, for example, the, the, the physical distancing. If, if the Boards of Health said, you know, we think it's really important to get that, the, the six-foot minimum distancing, that seems like it would be a threshold consideration for the task force and really steer the final recommendation to a particular place. So perhaps to the extent we have one or more of those gating... one or more of those gating questions like physical distancing, the Boards of Health could weigh in sooner rather than later.
I think they actually have informally. Jill, could you speak to that or Matt?
I can also weigh in at least speaking. So for example, we have a standing agenda item for every Sherburne Board of Health meeting where we're providing updates on the schools. So every single meeting, I take back the content we've talked about at the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee to bring back to the board. There are times that we identify pieces we need to vote on. So for example, I think going back to Amanda's question, one of the places we thought it made sense to go beyond state guidelines was to extend the masking to all students as opposed to limiting it to grades two and higher. I think from a distancing standpoint, my board hasn't explicitly considered that. I would say I have felt like I had an open voice to give feedback to Jill and the subcommittee structure to reach out to Andrew. So while I can't speak on behalf of my full board, I feel like every single concern I've had has been addressed, incorporated and been able to pivot. It doesn't make me way less anxious, but I feel like I've had a voice in the process throughout.
May I speak also?
Of course. Thank you.
I, I would say that in Dover, we also discuss issues that are raised in the Health and Hygiene Committee meetings at least once a week and sometimes in two of our meetings. And we have talked some about mask use and also Matt and I have talked with Jill and the other members of the Health and Hygiene Committee about it. I, I want to make a few points about masks. So the guidance about, about the six foot distancing is, is important. It's important to remember that that's for someone who's not masked, that that the risk increases substantially if you're unmasked and you're, you're less than six feet away from people. If you're wearing a mask, the risk is reduced. The risk is never zero. We all take risks every day about COVID. But, but wearing a mask is pretty effective at, at reducing the risk of transmission. And, and you could say, well, what about kids who might take their masks off? And, and that certainly is a concern to everyone. But I think that I, I, I think we will, I, I think you will see that kids probably will do very well with mask wearing. In other countries where mask wearing has become very common, kids just do it and they, they learn to do it. And we've talked some about hoping that, that particularly the young kids will start practicing before they, before school starts so that they're more acclimated to the, to, to what it's like to wear a mask. So it's not, we, we would hope that people would not be wearing a mask for the first time on, on their first day of school in the fall. I, I don't know if this will be bear out, but you know, I, I don't know if you've read, but in the Southern Hemisphere where influenza is active in our summer, it's their winter. This year influenza is, influenza cases are, are many fewer than they usually are. And, and that's probably because of more mask wearing. And, and I think we can be cautiously hopeful that, that if a lot of the, the kids in school are wearing masks, that there'll be fewer cases of influenza, fewer head colds, fewer cases of strep, and there'll be fewer people coughing and sneezing for those reasons, let alone COVID. So I mean, that's an optimistic view about mask wearing, but I, but I, I don't think it's overly optimistic.
Thank you so much. So Michael, I'm going to circle back to you. Is that okay for your other questions? Sarah, you're up next.
Thank you, Brooke. And thank you to Dr. Kio and, and all the many who are working on these issues day in and day out. We really appreciate it. And I also wanted to applaud the plan to resurvey parents and staff and, and recognizing that we are dealing with a moving target and that perhaps armed with a bit more information than the last time, we can get a better gauge on how people are feeling about the fall. And I, I think it's really important to be transparent about those results. And I'm, I'm also very grateful for the plan to to hold additional Q and A or Zoom sessions, because I do think it's, it's really important for people in the community to have the opportunity to ask their questions and raise their concerns. So thank you for that. A couple of questions. I wanted to see just a bit of further clarification on an aspect of the hybrid model that, that Dr. Reitman had touched upon with regard to chickering. It, it was discussed that on a cohorts in-person days that a class would be actually spaced out between two classrooms in order to allow greater physical distance between the students. But what does that mean for the teacher? Does that mean that the teacher is shuttling sort of back and forth between the rooms? Is there an expanded role for the educational assistance? I'm just wondering how that plays out in terms of the instruction. Excellent on the distance, just wondering how that practically works.
And I, and I know that.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, I was going to say, I know Deb has discussed that with Barb Brown multiple times over, so.
Exactly. Oh, thanks. Great question, Sarah. So you exactly pinpointed it. We're hoping to use adjacent classrooms and lean heavily on our educational assistance so that the teacher and the educational assistants are working across both rooms to support all of the students through the day, through their mask breaks, through any travel in the building. Does that help? Makes sense. Great. Thanks. Beth?
I'd just add to that too, that we know that teaching and learning looks different at the elementary level than it does at the middle and high school. And because we are so grounded in the workshop model, I think it actually works out to take advantage of our educational assistants, our special educators, our elective teachers, our ELL teachers, to be able to get them working with students in small groups. And, you know, I know the question was asked about how remote learning will look differently. One of the key findings from both our own experiment in the spring, as well as the research that's out there, is working in small groups is far more effective than working in large groups. And I really think the elementary model will allow for that.
I also wanted to ask about testing. It seems to me that any of the plans that we're contemplating that do involve a return to in-person instruction, including the hybrid plan, are predicated on the availability of testing and on the promptness and accuracy of the results. Because decisions will need to be made with regard to possible exposure. So I, I wondered if maybe that's something that our Board of Health counterparts can discuss. And I also wondered whether there's any thought to offering regularized testing at the school.
So if I could, Sarah, a great question. It's come up quite a bit. I'm going to ask Jill to respond to that. She can summarize the discussions she's had with Matt and Kay, because I know that there have been many in this regard. Do you mind, Jill?
Yes, absolutely. I apologize, Sarah. I missed, I missed the bulk of your question. Can you repeat it?
Sure. Just I wanted to ask about testing, given that if, you know, if there is any portion of any plan that involves in-person, it seems to me that it's predicated on the availability of testing and the promptness of the results. And anecdotally, I've heard that those, those things are not always, not always the case. So, and I, and I also wondered whether there's been any thought given to offering any kind of regularized testing at school.
So that is definitely one of the pieces of our subcommittee that we continue to work on, that we do not have an answer for yet. We certainly recognize that testing is can, can be an issue. We're hoping that as we continue to go on, the testing availability and turnaround time opens up. We know that there, the reports in the news now are saying, you know, it can be 72 hours, some are 20 minutes, some are seven days. And so we're hoping that that continues to improve as we move along. We do not have plans at this point to do testing at school, just because there's no, there's no testing for us that we would be able to offer in the schools at this time. Maybe down the line, that would be something, but there's just no product yet for us to have for that. And I'm sure Matt and Kay have a lot more thoughts on, on testing.
I can chime in a little bit. I think when we talk about testing, there's sort of a couple of big domains. So right now, one of the things that's challenging is we have a lot more people getting antibody testing, which can help tell us about historical infection. PCR testing is our current standard for identifying a current case. And that tells you that an individual's shedding virus in their nose, though data increasingly demonstrates that you can have people who shed RNA, which is what the virus is composed of for a very long time, though they're no longer infectious. So even the PCR has its own limitations. I think that as we think about testing, we have two, two domains. One is the individual student and whether they have COVID. And the other is what does testing tell us about the prevalence in our population or in our classrooms? I think that PCR will remain the standard for testing an individual student as kind of the gold standard. One of the pieces that is being worked on in a wide variety of domains is more point of care testing that will likely have worse test characteristics. But if you can do it for a buck fifty as opposed to 150 to $200 for the PCR testing, that can become more widely available, although that's not yet in the marketplace in a consistent and reliable way. Abbott had an assay that they were using that had some issues with its performance that kind of muddied the waters in that area. I think that right now the testing, depending on your site, is heavily impacted by the large commercial labs where Quest in New England is also supporting Quest in Arizona and Texas. And so they had a turnaround in their testing time from, you know, 24 to 48 hours to seven to 10 days now. The overall state average for Massachusetts right now is 2.2 days. But some of that is likely supported by very rapid turnaround testing in the healthcare setting where hospitals are able to perform this testing internally. And so I think that this is clearly on front of mind for the state. Governor Baker's had some comments on it. The new approval for pool testing, which means that multiple samples can be tested at one time, may help open this up for the commercial labs. And my hope is that by August, we're seeing a better test environment. I think in Massachusetts in general, there's adequate capacity where the Broad Institute has provided a great deal of support and capacity for this that we're lucky to have in the state. But the kind of access to testing sites and then also the cost. So on a kind of self pay basis, they're 150 to $200. So trying to figure out how to be balanced in our approach. The state has given specific guidance for what is required for if a student in a classroom is sick, what's required for them to return to school, as well as what the implications are for other members of that classroom environment. So I think some of this will be a little bit easier because the state's given very clear, explicit guidance. And so I think we would certainly expect to meet that guidance, which favors testing. I think that the curriculum piece gets tricky is if you do have a student who may be out of the classroom for seven or 10 days waiting for a test result, how do we support that learner? Especially as we get into flu season where, you know, again, right now for every 50 people tested in Massachusetts, 49 don't have COVID and one does. I think our hope is that we would have available enough testing to continue to see that, but it means quick turnaround is so important.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
If I can make one last, one last go at it. I, I think I've heard an answer or various answers to the, the last question that I wanted to ask, but I throw it out there anyway. And that is, again, concerning the hybrid model. If we have two days of in-person instruction and three days remote, at least in the, the elementary version that I heard. I gather one of the reasons for that split is the deep clean on Wednesdays and the availability of the building, should there be maintenance needs. But it does strike me, it's a big loss to have a full day of in-person instruction if part of our, our goal or our mandate to the degree that it's safe is to try to return students to that in-person mode as much as we can. So I, I just wondered if you might say a little bit more, and I, and I gather it's also a factor of what the, you know, neighboring towns are doing, but I wondered if you might say a little bit more about sort of the, the, you know, decision to, well, not the decision, but the thought that we would go with sort of that cohort A cohort B on Monday, Tuesday versus Thursday, Friday in person, as opposed to week A, week B, with deep cleaning and maintenance needs being addressed over the weekend, so that there isn't a down day on an in-person perspective.
Beth?
Sure. So based on what research says, as well as again, our own experiment in the spring, the more structure and the more contact students have with their teachers and with their peers, the better they do both academically and in the social emotional realm. And the committee really felt strongly that the students going a full week without being in school is, is too long of a stretch educationally and for their, their interaction with peers and the teacher. So again, K through eight or pre-K through eight, the idea is that the teachers work with them remotely. And as Andrew mentioned earlier, you know, I think one of the takeaways from the spring was that more structure, more mini lessons, more synchronous Zooms or Google meets with teachers is really important. And by assigning an individual teacher to be with their kids in person and then remote three days, those three days will be much more structured and much more robust and the teacher working in small groups and bringing in other colleagues to help as well. So that, that's the thinking.
That's helpful to hear that rationale. Yeah.
Okay, Sarah?
Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much. Sorry, Leslie just had a follow up to the testing and then we're going to Maggie.
I had a follow up to both of Sarah's questions, actually. I would like to push for that Wednesday. I would like to push for cleaning on Tuesday after everyone leaves or repairs. I would like to push for the kids to get on, on that Wednesday. And then my other thing is I am happy there's going to be an education assistant in the classes, classrooms with the teachers, but is it definite that every classroom can have an EA on every day?
So I, Dr. Reitman or, or Dr. Brown, you're welcome to chime in here, but I know that they have done a lot of thinking in their subcommittees around how best to utilize, like I said, educational assistants, ELL teachers, special educators, our, you know, PE and art teachers, and really how to take the amount of adults and ability to interact with kids and their knowledge bases and bring them together. So they're, they're confident that they can, they can make that work, especially because it'll only be 50% of the classes in the building. It's not like you're looking to cover all 35 sections. You're only looking to cover half of them within the additional being. So yes.
And just to be clear, every classroom would have an EA on in-school days, not remote days?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure every teacher had that assistant, especially since they're spread out to, through adjacent classrooms. So that's great. I guess I was also just concerned because you may get teachers that are sick and I don't want to see the EA then put in a position where they have to teach these adjacent classrooms.
If I could respond to the, the, the EA question, because actually it's a really good one. Leslie, and it kind of falls in line with the comment made earlier by maybe Liz. A lot related to teachers teaching outside of their certifications. One thing that the commissioner has been very clear on is that the state recognizes that we're not alone, that all of these school systems are in a really unusual circumstance and that people may need to be used in different ways than typically. So teachers potentially teaching outside of their realm. They, he has indicated that he would show flexibility on certification requirements. For us typically, if somebody wants to teach, they can teach one section outside of their subject area. But other than that, they have to get a waiver. He's showing flexibility on the waivers. And likewise, we know that we would, we would, we would potentially be in a position. I'm just speculating, but if, if some teacher were to be sick and have to be out for four, for two weeks, we may in fact have to re, ask our aides to cover for teachers, which we do know, by the way, on occasion.
Thanks, Leslie. Maggie, you're up.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of things. Two are just sort of requests for sort of the next time that we meet together to talk about this before we, the school committees have to make a decision about this recommendation. And that is that I know you mentioned in your presentation, Dr. Kio, about surveying families and staff. And what I'm most interested to find out from that survey is, given the presentation that we've heard tonight, what percentage of staff are feeling? what percentage of staff are feeling that they're not going to be able to return to their assignment? And whether that's because they have a health concern that's going to offer them an opportunity for a medical leave or whether they're going to ask to take a leave or whatever it is, what percentage of those folks are not going to be able to come back in either of the first two scenarios? Because for us, you know, for you guys operationally and then for us in terms of being decision makers, if that's a really high percentage, that needs to factor into our decision-making because we, we can't hire, you know, thirty percent of our staff. And we have a lot of very valuable and hardworking and experienced educators. And I would worry about the education that we'd be able to provide if we are faced with that choice. So that's just an ask for you guys for next time. A second ask that I have, not for tonight, but just in terms of our liability, is I need some information, understanding what is our liability for workers' compensation? If one of our educators or employees is, becomes ill from COVID as a result of coming back to work and being exposed to students, I just, I would need to, before we can make this recommendation, I would need to know what's our liability there as a district? And then my last question, which is like for actual answering right now, is I know, I understand that the state has come to some agreement with the teachers' union around these ten days of school and that that might have an impact on when school in any of these three, three things will begin. And so I'm curious, I know nobody's had a really long time to know that. But what is the conversation going on at DS around those days? What might they be used for? And how does that impact a decision that school committee needs to make around the start date of school?
Right. Good question. So that was literally mailed last night, I think. My days are blurred. Was it last night, Beth?
And my days are blurred too. I don't know.
Being hot off the press, yes.
I think it was last night. So we haven't had in-depth conversation about it. What we had originally been discussing, though, behind the scenes is in acknowledgement of the fact that our teachers would need time to prepare for opening, we were proposing or going to propose, originally, we're going to propose it tonight, perhaps, a change to our calendar to have our students return after Labor Day. Our teachers by contract can't return any sooner than the Monday before Labor Day. So that would be August thirty-first. We were, our students normally come the Wednesday after that. So they would normally be starting on the second, they'd be here for the third and the fourth. Where now, we were planning to come forward with a proposal that the students begin on the eighth and that the teachers begin on the thirty-first, as was planned. That said, you know, the commissioner is giving us the ten days. And I have just simply not had an opportunity to discuss it with the DSEA as to whether or not there's an appetite to use those days, whether or not we need them, quite frankly. I think we all care about our kids having as much time on learning and meaningful learning, especially at the beginning of the year. To me, cutting out ten days in that time period is probably not the best idea because it's not the cold and flu season. Cold and flu season sets in. That becomes a whole different story. And so I would think we would want as much in-person time as possible. But quite honestly, I just haven't had a chance to speak with Laura, who I know is on here, but I don't expect her to weigh in in front of two hundred and seventy-four people. But we would like to have that discussion.
So community members should stay tuned for when school will start?
Yes, because our proposal is to come forward with a change to the calendar of one form or another, a recommended change to the calendar for your, also for your August eleventh meeting. So that is another question that could be put forth conceivably on the survey of staff and families. But again, I think it's really important. Beth, can you talk about the specifics in terms of numbers of people doing the PD? Because I'm not sure that our teachers are going to need or want, quite honestly, that much time. They may. I just don't know. I have no way of knowing that without having the conversation. But the, the word was that there was a push in the state for thirty days of preparation before opening. That was what was put forth in the settled agreement was ten days. So perhaps there is a real desire for that. From my perspective, I wish we could, could shoot for the eighth. But again, I have to have a conversation. But I know that a lot of the professional development that people would want and need is happening now.
Yeah, I agree. And Laura McGovern and I have, have been talking to teachers about the professional development that's going on. And there's obviously no better cheerleaders for PD than teachers themselves. And they've really been encouraging each other to take advantage of the courses that are out there, all of which, or most of which are self-paced, so they can do it on their own time, at their own pace, when they're able. So we have a lot of PD going on. Obviously, it takes time to, you know, take the ideas that you get from professional development and turn them into lesson plans. So I do think, you know, a day here or there, that last week of August would be helpful. But I also know that we need to reserve a number of those days for safety training and preparations for the physical and health aspects of all this. So I, you know, originally, when we thought we'd have the five days before Labor Day, you know, we were prepared to say that's sufficient. But again, we haven't talked to the DSEA about their needs and their requests.
Maggie, is that, are you all set? You're on mute again.
I know. I am. I just, you know, I really want to understand. I'm a little concerned thinking ahead, like the next time we're going to meet as a body again is in two weeks. At that point, we're going to be asked to vote on one of these plans. And I'm a little worried about beforehand, having an opportunity to see and understand what exactly are we talking about, about percentages of teachers who need a leave or who are unable to teach in person or who just for their own personal thing are not able or willing to do this? Because I want to understand what percentage of this faculty that we have invested a lot in over a long career for many of them, are we going to lose as a result of this? Depending on which option we take before I make that vote, right? So that's one thing. And then I really need to understand our risk with regard to workers' comp. Because I think that's a big area of liability for us. So I just don't, I don't want answers to them tonight, but I don't want those to be forgotten because we all have a lot on our plate. And then just lastly, and I should have started with it, a ginormous, gigantic thank you to all the people who work for the school district who are on this call, to all the teachers who are working through their summer, you know, they're not twelve-month employees, to all the twelve-month employees who expected to have a break this summer. Nobody's getting that break. And to all the, it's been upwards of sometimes three hundred and fifty families and community members who are taking their evening to spend with us. Like, this is a huge lift. It is, you know, something I've never faced in my own lifetime and for many of us, our grandparents. And it's a big deal. And it's, it's, so thank you. That's all.
All right. Michael, you're up, and then Mark is after you.
Thank you, Brooke. First, I want to shorthand thank, reiterate the thanks for the huge lift of everybody involved in this process. I'm extremely grateful for the efforts. I, I share concerns around the, and Andrew, hearing your, your comments around teachers' health and wellness, I know that's, that's primary on everybody's minds. The, I think we can't really underestimate the potential psychological impacts that anxiety could cause. And I echo Maggie's interest in understanding where the teachers' kind of states of mind are around the various teaching and learning formats. I would hate to, to lose teachers. I would also hate to have teachers feeling like they're, they're teaching under duress. This is certainly something that I don't think any of us signed up for when we've taken our respective roles. It's an unanticipated event where, where we really need to kind of look at where things are going to be shaking out, not just with our students' well-being, but also with all of our, our staff's well-being. I am deeply concerned about timing. I know we have a meeting scheduled for two weeks from now. I thank you for, for the comments around surveying both students and, I'm sorry, teachers and, and families. I think it would be useful for the school committees to get a summary of the results of those surveys and would also want to have an interim meeting. I don't, I don't know that me personally would be able to both review a proposal and, and vote on a proposal in the same meeting. So I would like to request a meeting sometime next week where we can have a proposal prior to the meeting. Community members will have an opportunity also to see that proposal to either weigh in by way of email or contact school committee members so we can really, as much as possible, carry the voice of the community. I have thirty-six questions. Obviously, I'm not going to answer, ask all of them. I'm not going to answer or ask most of them. I, I would request, I think what I'll do is send these into the task force and perhaps the frequently asked questions can be expanded to include a number of the questions that are submitted. And so community members are able to really get the benefit of others' thinking and, and questions and the answers around those questions. I guess my, my one question for, for tonight is whether, and this is relative to, to the high school, Mr. Smith, whether the task force has considered, actually, it's a two-part question. So why don't I start with the, the statement that I would hope that we don't have a compromise in our, or a compromise to our remote learning in order to kind of meet requirements of an in-person or hybrid model? And I guess the thinking here is that there's a reasonable likelihood that we may sooner rather than later, maybe it's a bit of time, go to a fully remote model for some period of time. And that's the, the model that's where the most difficult learning or it's most difficult to learn under. And so we'd want to have that model most beneficial for student learning. So would not want to have compromises around how classes may be staffed or teachers who are teaching out of their certification in order that we can get scheduling accurate in an in-person or hybrid model, only to have that continue in very short order if we were to go fully, fully remote. The, the question related to this is whether the task force has considered unleveling class sections at the high school so that classes would have a blended of CP and honors options, which currently exists for some classes, and combined with offering singleton APs or less described APs through a virtual high school, which would potentially free up the, the teachers and the scheduling to have a more flexible model.
Do you want to respond to that, John, or?
Yeah, yeah, I certainly can. So when looking at each of these models, one of the things that the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee looked at, especially the high school breakout, was we wanted to try to have a seamless transition from whether it's in-person, hybrid, or remote because the possibility does exist that we could be maybe in all three at some point this year. So we wanted to have some consistency of that. In terms of the remote, I think that the remote learning plan is going to be far more robust and not sacrificing anything. If anything, we've actually increased the time on learning, the access that the students and the teachers have with one another. So that block has been extended. We have also changed the extra help, office hours, advisory flex to Wednesday, which would enable for students at the beginning of the week to get that necessary support, which would then make Friday a regular instructional day in the remote model. Because as we found out, one of the lessons we found out from remote was some kids were using Friday, some kids were not really using Friday. So we said, well, that's got to change. We've got to have more students accessing the extra help components. It's a kind of pillar of Dover Sherwood to provide that help. And that's why we moved it to the Wednesday with some other components. And keep in mind, Wednesday, we're doing the in-person or actually even the remote. Keep in mind, we're moving band and chorus to that flex block time period so that kids would in fact have those opportunities as well. So I'm very confident that our remote plan is going to be very robust and will not be sacrificing anything in terms of the unleveling. It's something that, you know, we, we did examine, we looked at it to see if it would be possible. I think what we wanted to try to do is deliver a schedule that maintained the rigor that is expected in the community and the options of those respective singletons, while also putting the most qualified people to teach those particular courses in front of people. We do have some precedent of some combine of honors and CP. It works well in some areas. Some areas, it's a little trickier. And it would be something that our teachers would certainly need some more support around differentiation. But that being said, is it possible to do? Sure.
And just a thank you for, for the comprehensive answer, Mr. Smith.
If that answers your questions, Michael, or partially, or?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I just, I did have one follow-up with regard to the, and I might just be completely misplaced on, on the balancing. Is there a balancing between doing something like unleveling and having teachers assigned to teaching courses outside of their either certification or what they've done over the past number of years? Or are those things really apples and oranges?
Yeah, a little bit of apples and oranges. But, you know, I mean, what, what everyone should know tonight is by law, at the secondary level, a teacher may teach one section out of their certification. We are fortunate in that we don't have that happen because we, we, we just don't want that to happen. But we are in fact allowed to do that. So we could have a teacher teaching a section out of their certification. It's not a practice that we want to go down because we want kids having the most qualified, strongest teachers in front of them providing that curriculum. The unleveling piece, you know, I think it also, in this short time period, will probably raise some concerns for students in their GPAs. That's a real reality. I think our students have been impacted in so many ways this past year, pre-K through twelve. And one of the ways is kids who are heading off to college, applying to college, trying to figure out what is college admissions going to be looking like? And, you know, is this going to be to my detriment? So we want to, we want to try to ensure that none of those things are put in place. For example, the, you know, the whole concept of, you know, the SAT and do you need to take it? Do you not need to take it? It's interesting, in some of my job-alike groups, there's some skepticism that the colleges are saying this, but we're really skeptical, like, well, what's that going to look like in admissions? You know, how quickly will they change and look at other things?
Are you all set, Michael? Okay. Mark, will you indulge me for a second? Can I just do a quick follow-up to Michael? Because bringing up remote learning, we're getting tons of questions about what remote learning or teaching is going to look like? How is it going to look different than it did in? How is it going to look different than it did in the spring? And so, Beth, will you just speak to that across the campuses?
Sure. So, you know, throughout the spring, as you all know, we conducted a number of surveys with educators as well as with parents to get feedback about how things were going and kind of tweaked along the way. We also, towards the end of the spring, did focus groups with students at all four schools to see, you know, what they felt worked and didn't work. And we had a number of individual interviews with teachers, K through 12, over 25, that we said, you know, what worked well? Can you teach us how to do that? Would you be willing to share with colleagues? So we have our own data. We've also, just before this meeting, I was on a couple of neighboring towns, their websites, looking at their presentations to school committees. And I said to my husband, I said, "It's frustrating that we're all recreating the same wheel, but I guess it's reassuring that their learnings from the spring are the same as ours." So I think our experimental research and data that came out of it is pretty valid. Unfortunately, I know at one point, the committee asked that we consider, you know, research. Most of the research out there about remote learning is about higher education learning because it's been far more popular there. Luckily, again, Dover and Sherburne is exceptional in so many ways, especially because of who lives here. We do have a parent who has done her dissertation in virtual learning, and she works for a company that has K through 12 virtual learning modules. So somebody had asked about that. She is on our committee and has given us a ton of guidance. So I'm confident that our learnings, along with what she's been able to help us with, is moving us in the right direction. So you're asking, what does that look like? We mentioned earlier that, you know, the number of synchronous sessions, again, trying to find that happy medium between having kids on a screen for six hours versus letting them be independent. Again, that's why we chose to have the teachers stay with the students remotely, K through eight. And to Michael's question, I think having the teachers at the high school level working with curriculum they're familiar with will help in that regard, too. Small groups work really well. So it's the intention of our students or of our teachers to work with students in groups of five or six so they can really interact with those kids, assess their learning, and make deeper relationships. Consistency is a huge piece for a student as well as for a family that have, might have multiple children. So we have adopted a learning management system, K through two, pre-K through two, which is Seesaw, and three through 12, which is Google Classroom. And so, within the grade spans, K through two, three through five, six through eight, nine through 12, part of our Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, including special educators, general educators, our tech integrators, have created uniform platforms. So a student, when they go on to their English, Google Classroom, the setup will be the same as their math. And again, our parent has helped us see that the research shows that students are much more engaged because it's easier to access the information, as well as parents. We're also going to have uniform templates for daily and weekly schedules so that students are not getting an array of charts and graphs and slideshows from different teachers saying, "Here's your work for the week," or "Here's your work for the day." Again, research and our own experiences, consistency is important. PD, we've offered teachers a number of courses this summer on how to best use your time with students, whether it's in the classroom or online, and really how to engage them, content, and assess, you know, where their needs are and where the misunderstandings are. Professional development around asynchronous work. How do you deliver content and materials to students in a developmentally appropriate way? Again, younger learners, you know, need much more support than the older learners in terms of knowing themselves and their styles and what they need. We have a course on assessment, and that's a huge piece because the traditional assessments we're used to giving in Dover Sherburne, you can't give online. And so, we've opened this realm of, well, how do you assess students online? And of course, it's a lot more about formative assessments. It's a lot more about student creation as opposed to remembering and understanding. Because if you have a child on a computer, you never know how many other devices or people nearby them can help them learn. But we have professional development, and the teachers are really opening their eyes to what assessment could look like. We have our top 20 apps. Our tech integrators have identified that are going to be offered to all teachers throughout the district. They created tutorials, teacher samples from DS using those apps. And they'll be offering office hours to their colleagues in August to learn them. We have PD on universal design for learning, which is really about differentiating for different kids with different learning needs. PD on cultural responsiveness. Kate and her team, Kate McCarthy and her team, have obviously had time this go-around to plan of how they're going to meet the needs of kids as opposed to just jumping in and doing an emergency triage. So she has lots of great plans in how to meet students, you know, academically, social, emotional needs, et cetera. Accountability is going to be big. So the state is asking that whatever grade system we would maintain in a normal situation or a traditional situation, we continue. So we know that in the elementary school, that'll be standards-based in six through 12, that's grading. So that's on our to-do list in August for the Teaching and Learning Committee to figure out how we take these formative assessments and alternate assessments and turn them into grades. And unfortunately, many of our students are motivated by that. So the accountability between attendance and being graded will hopefully increase their engagement. And lastly, I wrote down technology. Thanks to Dawn and her creative thinking and our very generous community, we've been able to provide teachers, they'll be getting new laptops, that are going to provide the bandwidth and the capabilities of working with all these new apps, as well as screens that will allow them to draw as though they were in a classroom on a blackboard to give students feedback on work. And obviously, thanks to the regional committee, we have our middle school students who are going to have the one-to-one initiative, which then freed up all of their former devices to go three through five and nine through 12 for students at the high school who don't have their own favorite device already. And then again, the district is providing updated iPads for pre-K through two so they can do the seesaw work. So lots of great things. I'm hopeful that the model will be more robust. And as someone mentioned earlier, I'm just so thankful for the teachers for giving up their time and diving in and sharing with each other this summer.
Mark, you're up. And then Anne, you are next.
Thanks so much. And thank you. I recognize this is a moving target, yet I'm hopeful that as we get a little more concrete information each day in the national and local scales, it helps crystallize our own thinking and planning. I also recognize that, like, one solution and suggestion can offset other structures and cause subtle shifts in schedule, and that tonight was an overview. But when I look closely at the middle school hybrid model, it looks like the classes are each about an hour and 20 minutes long with four minutes of passing time. And I wonder, you know, that feels excessively long without much movement. And perhaps it means they're staying in blocks back-to-back?
The classes are about 83 minutes right at the moment, but that does not yet to factor in mask breaks or in other, you know, transition times. That was an initial go at it. The downtime that they have, though, does have to be structured so that they don't have their masks off and are maintaining social distance. But yes, we don't expect them to sit for an hour and 20 minutes.
Thanks, because I recognize that, you know, traditional group work is more of a challenge in this kind of scenario as well. I'm a science guy, so I totally understand the value of group work and the challenge that we're going to face this coming school year. So in any case, I only request that, once the models crystallize further before our next meeting, we, I'm sure people have done this, but really sit through that experience for both students and teachers so we can feel that hour and 20 and whatnot and what the mask break or passing time looks like for a large group. Even if you have a pilot group come in and model one day, might be helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Anne, you're up.
So Brooke, mine's actually kind of a more of a logistic question. Do you want to go to people who have more specific questions to the topic? Mine's more of a, it's actually more like a school.
Well, I don't know what their topics are, but I have a list here. Do you want me to come back to you?
Yeah, why don't you come back? I think maybe I could be much more of a kind of a closing.
Closer, okay.
Thank you.
That's okay. Amanda, then you are up next.
Okay, thanks, Brooke. So I have two questions. One around social, emotional learning and wellness for our students, and one around equity. So I know that there is a Subcommittee of the Subcommittee working on social, emotional learning. And I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about what that looks like? I'm thinking specifically about the ways in which teachers might start building relationships early. Maybe that's part of what those first 10 days are used for. So kids feel connected because they were already, kind of, the summer disconnects them anyway, but they'll be going back to new teachers. And I would say that that's one thing we had a really positive experience with in the spring was the way that relationships were elevated above academics. So I'm just curious about the work you're doing around that and if there's been any PD specific to trauma-informed teaching as part of the work you're thinking about for the fall? And then, in terms of equity, I think, Beth, you spoke to some of this in terms of technology, but I'm just thinking about those students who do have different situations at home, more or less support. How are we going to help support those kids that we know struggled in the spring remotely? If we're either in a remote or a hybrid model?
So I can start with your first question, if that works. And I know Ellen's on the call, too, and I know Brooke's been very involved. And this is also, I don't know who wants to jump in, but we have a group that is meeting, and I'm kind of straddling between all the different groups. But we are, we have been talking really since the spring about what impacts the building closures and now the, you know, what we're unsure about for the fall and what the fall will bring. And so, we've been thinking about ways to connect even through Zooms and creative ways to kind of have community connections. So the group itself has split up into kind of a student focus and then also a family and staff focus. And so, they are kind of diving deeper into both of those subjects. I think the way to, the one thing that we had an advantage of in the spring was that we knew the students that we were going remote with. So the piece that you mentioned, Amanda, around how do you make connections with people that you haven't worked with before, students that you haven't worked with before, even in person when you have the masks on? So we've talked a lot about, you know, there are a couple, one of the social workers had an idea about having pictures on everybody's desk and getting to know people and having teachers, you know, what are the opportunities that teachers have around face shields and masks? And, you know, and thinking about that in just the ways of connection. I think one of the subjects and the topics that have been brought up is how do we also collect data on how students are, how students are doing? And what supports they need? And so, the group and the school psychologist had started looking into this. And there is an assessment tool that carries with it some curriculum. So we are looking into that intervention, and that is full district-wide, all ages. And so, we've been trying to think about how to fit in some of those, the curriculum as well as the data collection, but also in the beginning time when we are in person, hopefully, for a stint of time, really focusing on relationships. I know the desire will be to catch up on a lot of the curriculum and to get all the work done in person, but making sure that people do really have that focus on making the connections while we are in person with the potential to maybe be going fully remote again. So it's definitely been something that we've been focusing on really since March 13th. But the group that's been working with, under the curriculum and instruction umbrella, has really been thinking about what kinds of things are important to share with families? What kinds of things are important for teachers to be thinking about in preparation? And really, just our main focus on what, how are our students doing? And how best can we support their social, emotional functioning? I, I'm not entirely sure. Beth might know better about the trauma-informed instruction and the professional development around that. But did that answer your question, Amanda?
Yes, thank you.
So to the trauma-informed instruction, that's certainly a class that some of our teachers have taken this summer, but certainly a number of our student support personnel. In terms of the equity issue, again, you know, we are able to, you know, thank goodness for this community, provide devices to any child who needs them, as well as, I know Mr. Ratako is looking into the hotspots for students and staff who might need additional boost with their Wi-Fi. Again, it's not going to be perfect because we all go through belts where we don't have a connection, but it'll be our best efforts. And then, in terms of making sure that students are engaged once they do have access to the curriculum, you know, again, I think Kate and the building leaders really refined their models last spring of collecting data, coming together, looking at, you know, who's attending, who's not attending, who's struggling, and identifying point people for those students, whether it's a guidance counselor, whether it's a special educator, whether it's an EA that someone had a connection with. And so, again, being a small community, we're lucky that we can have people who reach out. And there were a number of measures they put into place between a guidance counselor calling a child every morning and getting them up and organized and giving them an overview for the day. Again, as John Smith mentioned, we, Wednesdays are now going to be office hour days and kind of regroup days because we realized that after Monday morning, when our special educators and guidance counselors will have an opportunity to get kids organized, they need to check in again on Wednesday and a check-in on Friday. So, you know, again, it's a work in progress, but I feel like, you know, between what we learned in the spring and the time that Kate and her group has been able to put into really solidifying a plan, you know, we'll do the best we can for all of our students in the fall.
Lynn, I know you've been waiting. I don't see you there, but you're up next.
Can, Andrew, maybe, can you speak to what the process is going to be going forward over the next couple of weeks for the decision? For the decision that we're going to make? Screw that question up.
No, no, I understood you. Yeah, the process is that we are going to hear what people have to say. We're going to survey people, and we're going to make sure that the school committee members have that survey data and that we're, you know, doing the best we can to respond to their questions prior to that night. It's really, it's really a question of, I mean, what I think that you have in front of you is a proposal for three possibilities. And after a really thorough, thorough and well-thought-out process, and just included so many different voices, that I feel like, hopefully, you'll feel confident that the three that have been put in front of you were not just an afterthought, but that in fact, this is something that's already been fleshed out by a wide group of people. Therefore, really what you're faced with on the 11th is making a decision on what I bring forward to you, which is going to be my recommendation that we either go all-in, we go hybrid, or we go remote. And so, that's what you'll be deciding. I don't think that the school committees are deciding, you know, whether or not we need to blow up the hybrid model and do something that's now week on, week off because you've entrusted this decision to a body of people that have come forth and done all the research. I mean, you could completely overrule it, but I wouldn't suggest that at all. I think that it's really, this stuff has been thought through by your best people. And so, the next step is really us hearing from people, putting that data in front of you, and then ultimately making a decision based on what I recommend. You know, I'm just one person. And it's, you know, it's similar to what we did with Start Times. It's, you know, there's 16 members. This isn't your typical school committee. So we need, I think, uniform agreement.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
You're all set, Lynn? Okay, we have Megan, Kate, and then Anne. So Megan, you're up next. Kate, you're on deck.
Great, thank you. Beth, you touched on this a little bit, and I just want to bring it up because it's a question that's come up to me a couple of times about, I know you talked a lot about the different consistency that will be in place across platforms for kids for learning. And I know there was quite a bit of just difference in practices between the teachers, especially at the elementary level, in terms of what was happening with whole class and small group Zoom engagement, and wondering if there's also going to be consistency across that and, you know, kind of sharing of best practices there.
So the answer is yes. And again, any of our elementary leaders are welcome to chime in. But we have taken those best practices and kind of made them the expectation across the elementary classrooms in terms of, you know, meeting with the whole class in the mornings for a morning meeting and perhaps the end of the day for a raffle. the, the whole class in the mornings for a morning meeting and perhaps the end of the day for a wrap-up, but then small groups in between. Um, so, you know, we've taken that, that, um, that finding to heart. I apologize, I lost my train of thought.
No, that's fine. Thank you. I think you, you've covered it. Thank you. My other question too is, um, around the curriculum piece and this may be, I mean, I think it can be applicable at all levels, but maybe even more so in the, um, middle school and high school where kids are, are able to work more independently. But thinking about the challenge success work that we've been doing over the past few years and particularly about the Empower, um, book that we read last year and wondering if this is, if we're thinking about different models and kids spending time being remote, if this is an opportunity to bring in more of, you know, student-directed, project-based learning opportunities for students? And if that's something that's being, um, being explored too?
Absolutely. You know, I think somebody touched on it earlier, whether it was Andrew or John, that, um, you know, we've had to be creative. We're, we're looking at the flipped classroom model. Um, nobody asked for the pandemic for sure, but I think, um, it has taken a lot of what the academic innovation committee and challenge success committees have learned about, uh, 21st century learning and, and forced us to try to, uh, you know, implement some of it. Um, in fact, the person who wrote the Empower book is one of the people who's running our professional development this summer. And he has modules specific to project-based learning, student collaboration, student choice, um, student self-assessment, all of those pieces. So, um, you know, yes, you know, I think that again, we, we're not going to see necessarily the same number of student options across classrooms, um, but it's certainly an expectation that, you know, the traditional ways of teaching uh, will not permeate our, our experience this year.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that's been part of the professional development this summer too. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Uh, Kate, and then Anne, you're up.
Thanks, Brooke. Um, thank you, everybody. I, I'm amazed at the creativity and flexibility and depth of detail that you're all describing right now. Um, I appreciate you answering our questions and I'm very grateful for your leadership and expertise in all of your fields. Um, my question goes back to at least an hour ago. Um, and I'm wondering if it's something that maybe Jill or Kay or Matt could answer. Um, a high school teacher asked about their level of exposure as opposed to other teachers because, and forgive me if I'm not understanding this correctly, they will be within the same week seeing more students than the other teachers. Is that correct? And I was just wondering, I know that Matt addressed this, but if he could explain that again to the English major, I would greatly appreciate that.
Matt loves the sound of his own voice and is always happy to chime in. Um, so I think of the two models we've discussed, within a span of essentially 72 hours over the course of a week, every teacher will have seen every student in the, uh, middle school and elementary school. That will have occurred, uh, with the cohort kind of Monday, Tuesday was Miss Smith's class. They all saw Miss Smith and were all together. Whereas Miss Jones, who's a high school teacher, would have half of her class Monday to Tuesday, half of her class Thursday to Friday. But in both cases, a teacher within a fairly short span of time is exposed to all of the children in their class. So depending on sort of when a kid is symptomatic or if there's a case that spread, the differences between those two models from my standpoint are pretty modest in terms of, I don't see one as being higher or lower risk to the teacher based on the structure of the model itself.
Okay, thank you. That, um, I just needed to hear that again. That makes more sense to me.
Can I just ask one quick question? This is Anita Lotti and I teach at the high school. So in the high school model, we have, the staff are going to be more. So in the hybrid model for K through eight, the staff will only be seeing half of the staff, but in the high school model, we'll be seeing 100% of the staff. So when we talk about staff-to-staff transmission, is that an issue?
So what I would say is, I think, um, uh, I'm happy to chime in unless somebody else wants to.
I think this is your wheelhouse there, Matthew.
That sounds lovely. Uh, what I would say in the staff-to-staff model is that masking will be incredibly important. So there's actually a study that was done at our hospital that looked at the rates of acquisition of COVID in the workplace or, uh, more accurately, acquisition of COVID by, um, healthcare providers who work in a hospital. Most of our acquisition was in the community. It was not acquired in the hospital. Um, and the institution of universal masking reduced the rate of transmission between members by about 50% and that was in a much higher period of prevalence. So I think masking, social distancing, being really rigorous to reckon, recognize these are strategies that people need to have. I'm not worried about casual passing in the hallway is a big source of transmission. I'm worried about break rooms and meals and where do people spend time together and how do you decompress? And I would say this is not the time for you to eat lunch together with both your masks off. I think this is the time to say exercising this is kind of a universal precaution to the degree possible is prudent. But I don't think that staff being in the same physical building will pose a substantial differential risk as long as they're not eating lunch together, spending time unmasked together.
Along those lines, Matt, I, I know Jill has mentioned many times over, which I very much appreciated because it helped put clarity on it for me, is that this, we're talking about layers of protection here, not one simple thing. Do you mind, you know, restating that, Jill?
Right, so we're, we're always thinking of all of the processes that we're putting in place, right? So masking is one of them. Uh, distancing is second. Hand washing, um, keeping track of the numbers, right? So keeping track of the prevalence in the community. Um, uh, asking the parents to be really, um, aware of their child's symptoms. If, if their children are sick, we cannot have them come to school that day. Uh, we're really asking for everyone's help on that end. Um, and then, uh, being, being open and communicating with your building nurses, right? If you are having questions, if you're worried about what a symptom might look like or you're, you don't know, you can reach out to us, but we're going to ask that, um, that anything that you're concerned about is probably going to be recommended that you keep the child home that day. Um, and all of those things are parts of our layers of, of protection. And then referring for testing if we do suspect that a child is symptomatic and, um, we will be, we will be recommending testing.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Um, Anne, you've been waiting patiently. Thank you.
No worries. I, um, so while we have everyone here, I would like to actually do a little bit of, there's so many layers and to be honest, I've already forgotten half of the stuff I looked at on the PowerPoint. There was so much information, which was great. I appreciate that. Um, so I'm looking forward to going back and looking at that once that's shared with us. I have a feeling there are going to be a lot more questions that just haven't even occurred to us yet that we'll think of as we look at that again or as we contemplate all the things that we, all the information we've heard tonight. So I know a couple of people have mentioned, I'm wondering if we could as a school committee potentially meet again next week to continue to, some of this discussion even amongst ourselves, not necessarily, we don't necessarily need to have all of the, um, administration and, and teachers. Obviously you're always welcome, but maybe you not feel obligated since we've already taken enough of your time tonight. Um, in part because I was sort of going through and I'm hoping people can help me if I'm missing things. I feel like there's a lot of stuff the school committee has to actually vote on that are subparts, that are things that we're responsible for as opposed to, and you, you talked about the, the three plans that we vote on, but as parts, um, I heard, I, at one point you talked about a policy about, uh, having students wear masks pre-K through 12. So if it's a policy, then that requires, uh, a read and a second read. Talked about looking at grades, which I guess isn't a policy, but that is something that we would vote on. Um, curricular changes, um, if there's changes to the program of studies and I'm not sure if that, the things that we're doing or the changes that are being made fall under that, I, I just don't know yet. Calendar change. So maybe there are four things and probably more that we actually need to vote on that are, that's not one of the, the three plans, um, which I'm thinking may be something we'd want to do separately so that we can focus on then the, the big nuts, the big three plans at the meeting on the 11th. Um, so I'm sort of throwing that out there, something for people to think about, um, just so that we can be as efficient as possible and make sure that we dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's as appropriate. So we can really make sure we can focus on the big nuts.
I, I think what, what I was saying, Anne, in terms of, uh, the, the, you know, the policy issues, I mean, it, it is a policy issue in terms of the mask and there are some COVID-19 policy issues that I think MASC has weighed in on. And I think that that probably can be addressed, you know, relatively quickly. That's fine, the two reads, that makes sense, but those don't, those are not necessarily going to impact your decision on the 11th, uh, which model, uh, whether or not you agree with my proposal or recommendation for the model I put forth. The, um, we have to, we, we have to put this thing together. The proposal has to be into the state on the 10th. We're, our meeting is on the 11th. So obviously, um, we're up against it. That wasn't a choice on my part. Neither was having to have these three models to you on the 30th, uh, tonight so that they can be submitted on the 31st. This is just the, uh, the situation that we're under. I do appreciate that your, uh, that your acknowledgement of the fact that, uh, another meeting for some folks is not such a big deal, but for this team, I can assure you, it is a very big deal. And I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, drag my feet or anything. I'm just being completely candid. It's, uh, people have really, really gone above and beyond the call of duty. Some of us are getting paid for this work this summer, but some are definitely not. And so, um, and I think that they would want to be there if there was another meeting to discuss this. So, my plan, as I said, would be to have the Zoom meetings, get that information, uh, uh, you know, get a, get a sense of where people's, uh, most significant concerns are. Get the survey information to the school committees in, in advance and to give you a sense of where I'm headed in advance. I don't, I, I don't have a problem giving the school committees a sense of where, what my recommendation will be in advance, if that's helpful. But I don't, uh, I don't, uh, I don't, I, I'm very leery of, of prolonging this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually not trying to prolong. I was trying to sort of separate out tasks um, in an effort to make, to streamline. Um, but I think that for me personally, I, I have complete faith in with a great team that's been working on all this. Um, so it's not for me, that's not about the decisions. Um, although I do appreciate being given information about the things that led you to those decisions. Um, but my point here was really more of, let's pull stuff out so that they don't impinge upon the important work of talking about the actual decisions. Um, and it's fine if that doesn't seem to make sense. I just want to make, I don't want to have us have to have, you know, four votes in addition to the big votes, or I'll try to avoid having lots of votes.
Well, I, but one thing, one thing for sure is that, and I, I hope, I don't know if I made this clear in my presentation, this is not the end of it on the 11th. We then have to go back and double down on every single one of these items to make sure that everything is going to dovetail nicely. It, it makes the start times initiative look simple and simplistic and like one level. This is so complicated. So we are, this is going to be an ongoing, uh, uh, process and, uh, we will obviously still have another meeting scheduled later in August to provide the committees with an update on the work that we've done at that point. Hopefully we'll be real close to having this stuff finalized, but.
We're powering through. Um, I've got a queue still, guys, so.
Actually, I'd like to respond to Anne because I think she was querying, uh, various, they're just getting general sentiments. So if I may just follow up on her question.
Okay.
I know my, my perspective, Anne, is that I, I do not feel like I could, uh, vote uh, up or down either way without an interim meeting. Um, we, we are seeing the presentation for the first time, um, tonight, which is a break from longstanding protocol, um, where we have, uh, time to review and digest before a meeting and then be able to both submit questions before a meeting as well as feel like we've submitted or, or, or have time to ask thoughtful questions. Um, and we also don't have time to, to hear from, uh, community constituents uh, between now and then, um, and, and the ability to have those follow-up questions in public session. So I, I think it's, um, in, in my, from my perspective, a necessity to have a meeting next week. That's just my two cents.
Hello, can I say something?
Judy, yeah, Judy, you're next. And then Colleen, you two haven't gone yet.
Um, I, I appreciate very much the burden that this process has placed on the administration, the teachers, me, um, and anybody else who's on, who's on these committees. Having said that, there's a huge amount of information that we, we still, you know, need and some discussion and understanding. I think this was a great discussion tonight. We're going on three hours. Um, and I don't feel, um, I, I think, and I don't think we need everyone at a meeting next week. I don't think everybody has to be there, but I think that there will be, there are some questions that are going to come up related to the survey, related to some of these other questions. You know, I know Maggie had two unanswered questions. Um, and there will be questions that will come in from families. And, and we need some time to understand those and, and, and discuss them before we can make a really informed decision. So I don't know how anybody else feels about it. It might be helpful.
Um, I have, uh, Colleen teed up. I don't know if it's about that or something else, if anyone else wants to weigh in.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead. Thank you very much, um, for all of the work everyone's been putting in. I echo all of those sentiments. Um, I, as an elementary school parent, am, you know, hearing from a lot of other parents who are very concerned about childcare and tutoring and, um, what their options will be if it is a hybrid or a remote situation. Um, that is a concern of elementary school parents. That is not likely that a concern for middle and high. Um, and I want to know, um, what considerations, um, that, you know, what, what has been considered in terms of options for parents who are two full-time working parents, don't have someone who can be in the home with their child while they do remote? Are there, have there been any other, um, have you guys thought about alternative spaces um, in the community such as the Carol Center, the library? Um, being creative, I think, is, is really important right now as well as being flexible. Um, and I would like to explore the use of other spaces, um, for those parents um, that absolutely cannot be home with their child and maybe for, you know, things come up. So, uh, having an option for parents and families that cannot be home doing the remote learning. Um, the second thing I'd like to say is that, um, I think Plexiglas is a really something we should consider, um, in the classrooms. I think it'll allow teachers to, um, really express things and I, you know, having been a science teacher, I, I can't imagine trying to stand up in front of the class without expression. Um, I just, I think that exploring the idea of Plexiglas workstations for students would allow sort of them to be closer together. Um, and I, you know, for the teachers to be teaching behind Plexiglas, they may actually feel safer, um, in that sort of situation. Um, but my last point is, um, about teachers who don't feel comfortable coming back, either for their own, you know, for whatever reason it is. I would hope that we'd be creative about ways of using those teachers, um, that don't involve coming into the school. So I, those were, um, you know, having to do a flexibility and, and also, you know, parents have a lot of questions. So having a parent resource page with frequently asked questions, that's something that, um, I've, I've had, you know, requested, um, from parents. Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. And yeah, so parents, do you know, we do have a parent faq on the district remote learning page. Is that correct? Um, which is continually updated.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. We're going on hour three. This is obviously a huge, multifaceted discussion. I had two more folks who had questions. Then I think we should regroup and talk about, talking next week, because I'm sure people, and I know you all have been working so hard all day trying to get this presentation done. So this is probably kind of at the end of your level of comfort at the moment. So I'm going to throw it to Leslie, and then Amanda, and then let's figure out what next steps are.
I'm up? Am I up?
Yes, you are.
Great. I have a couple questions. I'm just going to throw them out there. I'm wondering where we stand on the pool of substitutes, and will we be sharing them across the region? What's the protocol for that? And what's the protocol for increasing our pool of substitutes? I am wondering if we choose a model, when or if can we change that said model? And I'm also wondering, what are the barriers we have for option one, which is full return to school, and when or how can we discuss overcoming those barriers?
I may need you to go through those one at a time, Leslie. What was the first one?
The first one was our pool of substitutes. Where do we stand on that? How are we doing with that? I would prefer not to share them across the region. I'm wondering if we are going to be sharing them across the region, and how do we increase our pool of substitutes? Because I would really like to avoid having an EA stuck in a class without anyone with two adjacent classrooms.
So hiring substitutes has never been a very easy thing for any school system. It's, even in the worst of economic times, it's still hard to find substitutes, because it's not just about the money. It's having the skill set to work with young people, and some people just don't have it, the patience, et cetera. So the pool has been weak for hiring substitutes for decades. In fact, my entire career, it's been weak. So, and that hasn't changed. I think it's going to be much worse, unfortunately. I'm just being honest, because I think every town around us is also going to be looking for substitute teachers. So perhaps, you know, we heard at the last meeting, parents are very interested in volunteering for things. This is a great place to get involved. If maybe we'll see those numbers creep up. I don't think after the last meeting, when I threw that out to families, or to parents, and said, you know, they asked, how can we help? I said, perhaps you could sign up a substitute. I don't think we had any new applicants. So I do think that's going to be a concern. Them spreading across the district is really their own personal decision. I mean, if we hire someone to be a substitute, sometimes they'll say, I don't work with middle school, or I don't work with high school, I only work with elementary. So it's not as easy as us just saying, unless we want to cut our pool even further. So what was your next question?
My next question was, when we do choose a model, when or if can we change that model?
It's the school committee's prerogative to change it anytime they want. I mean, that's your prerogative. It's within your domain. My charge is to put in front of you what I think is the best possible model, based on, hopefully, what you would consider to have been a thoughtful process. And, but if you were to decide you wanted to change it, if the, and by the way, one school committee could change it, and another could go a different direction. We're trying to think collectively, and that's what we tried to put forward, was something that would work for the full system. But you're three separate school districts.
And then my last, that's good to hear. And then the last question was, regarding option one, I don't feel that we've discussed it tonight, which was the full return to school. I'm wondering what the barriers are, and how or when can we discuss overcoming those barriers?
I think that's what we were doing tonight. I mean, I think we've been talking, that's the whole point of this meeting tonight, is to explain what, what the rationale is for hybrid, what the rationale is for remote. We don't know what the pandemic is going to do. We're trying to, you know, there's a lot of constituents that weigh in on any one of these models. So, for example, it's safe to say that all of our working parents would be interested in having the students in fully, or they might be more inclined to, because they need to work, and especially for younger children. So on the other hand, we have other constituents, such as our teachers, who might say, well, I'm not crazy about that. I don't feel safe doing that. And then we might lose a lot of teachers. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's not, it's just not a simple equation. And so, at the end of the day, you know, I think what, what we put forth in terms of these three models, trying to show you what the pros and cons are for each, but ultimately, I have my own opinion about which is best. And I don't expect it to change dramatically. Perhaps it might, based on what I'm hearing or seeing through the surveys and the, and through the Zoom meetings, but, but we'll see. That remains to be seen. I don't, I don't want to, you know, close the door on anything quite yet, because this, again, in the next two weeks, a lot could change.
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, all. So we're on hour three. I think everyone who's been working all day and putting this together is probably exhausted and needs a glass of wine or two. We will, let me ask, if you still have questions, if you could sit them to your chairs, we will work on getting a meeting put in for next week to continue this discussion. I don't know when those parent forums are going to be. Have those been scheduled as of yet? Maybe we can work with those. Okay, we still have one more. Is everyone okay with that? I think we need to move on, digest, process, and give our administrators, and our staff, and our educators some time to breathe. So let's move on to the superintendent update, which is just a pretty quick one, I think. And we will then regroup. Your backup, Dr. Kea, sorry.
And I'm missing my agenda. So Dawn, do you mind? Sorry, you're muted. I know we were going to talk about two things. One was, and Dawn was actually going to leave the conversation.
Yeah. So you have a memo. Actually, we're making the formal announcement this evening that after 20 years, Ralph Kelly is actually retiring from the school district as of August 6th. He's been with us, like I said, for 20 years, and has managed our day-to-day building maintenance. He's overseen many, many capital projects, and supervised our custodial staff on all three campuses. I know here, we'll miss him walking in with his keys ringing. We always know when he's in the building. But his sunny disposition, as I said, and his can-do attitude will be missed. But at the same time, you know, he's going on to his next chapter, and then we're able to open up another chapter here, seeing as we've had the same facilities directed for 20 years. So we will be posting the position. And as I noted, we probably will be asking a member of the region's building subcommittee to join our small interview group. Just as a reminder, the director of facilities position is shared across the three districts, but it's shared at an 80-10-10 split. So I think to facilitate the process, for us, we're going to just request a region, a school committee meeting, or member to join us. So we will keep you updated on the process in the interim. I've always worked closely with Ralph, so I'll just be working closer to the head custodians while we look for a replacement. The good news is that we have all the scheduled occupancy evaluations and inspections scheduled before Mr. Kelly leaves us, so we will be ready to open the schools in some capacity with all that work behind us. Any questions on that? Michael?
Given, given the myriad responsibilities you have now with reopening, is, would it be helpful to get any, any support in his absence to try to backfill some of what he was doing?
Yeah, I think we're, I have that in the back of my mind, looking for sort of maybe some backup. But I think first, we're going to get it posted and see what the pool looks like, and proceed. I do know that, I think I've already gotten a couple calls that there's people, once we post it, that might be interested, from various connections that we have, because of all the contractors we work with. So I'm going to be hopeful that there's a good pool, and that we'll find someone who, you know, within a short period of time, will be able to join us. But yes, then definitely we'll look for extra outside help if we find we need it. But all of our head custodians are very capable, and I think with all the work we've already done this summer, we're actually in really good shape for the opening.
And the second piece, Dawn?
So I just wanted to keep the school committee abreast. You've heard about some of the CARES funding opportunities out there. And so I put together a spreadsheet by district to show you what we've actually been allocated to date. So what's been allocated directly to the school districts, and then the indirect funding from the two towns, Dover and Sherburne. And so you can see, as of last Friday, they rolled out the school reopening grants, which gave us $225 per pupil. So that is almost just under $480,000. And then there's an additional elementary and secondary relief, emergency relief fund, that is bringing in an additional almost $80,000. So we are strategizing right now with how those grants are going to be used. And you can see the list of potential uses and things that we have already identified. I feel comfortable that is, if with our ability to draw on the two towns indirect funding, that we will be able to hopefully accommodate all the unexpected expenses we have from this situation, and not worry about using any of our existing general fund budgets that you have. So we won't be taking anything away from the budgets that you approved, but we've been able to secure funds that will cover, I think, the majority of the expenses that we're going to, that we already have, and that we're going to have to encounter. So I think also, that gives you a good idea of all the work that we've been doing to get us ready to go back to school. If you see all the things there listed, a lot of those are already sort of sealed deals delivered here in the buildings. And as you know, they're still working on some of the other things. But I thought it would also be helpful for the school committee to see all the things that we've been working on to date, and that there's funding to cover it, in that you can see where all the different areas of funding are coming. There could be more coming down the pike, if you listen to what's happening at the federal level, and also what Governor Baker said. They are looking to make sure schools are, have what they need. So there could be additional. But I think we felt pretty comfortable right now with the school reopening grant, that that was sort of what sealed the deal, that we could move forward with a lot of these things that we wanted to make sure we had in place before school opened. So I'll keep you updated on that, but I just wanted you to be aware, because I know it's out in the news, so that you can, you know, if people ask you, how are we making this all work? You can see that we do have funding that's available to us to take care of a lot of these situations.
Thanks, Dawn. Okay, that was our last agenda item. Unless there's anything else, I think everyone has a lot to think about. Thank you for all the hard work that everyone's doing, and we're very, very, very grateful. But we need to let you go and have some semblance of an evening. So we will reconvene, figure out when that is. And again, thank you. And we'll see everybody soon. Do we need to pull to adjourn? Do we need to pull to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay. Well, we could just keep going. Yeah. So Dover, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Okay, a second?
Leslie, a second.
Do I need to do a roll call?
Yup. Okay, but I don't think anybody will worry about it. Let's just, don't you think?
All in favor?
Yeah.
It was everybody, whoever's taking these notes.
Amy's been on with us, I think, most of the night.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you so much, everyone. We're really so grateful for your time and expertise, and all the thought you're putting into this. It is mind-boggling. There's no other word for it. So thank you so much, and have, go have some bit of an evening, and be well. We'll talk to you soon.